All right. So we're going to call to order the July 8, 2025. This is the Town Commission Work Session for Impact Fees. So it's ordinance number 202504 for impact fees, which will be on tonight's regular town hall or town meeting tonight. So anyone?
Call real quick. I want to do the roll call real quick.
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes.
Commissioner Keller?
Here.
Vice Mayor Satterfield? Mayor Taylor? Commissioner Ramos?
President.
Commissioner McMullin?
Hey now, man. Thanks for coming out again.
Good evening. Michelle Galvin with Raftellus. So this is the second of two workshops as it relates to the extraordinary circumstance meetings for the impact fee study. So we'll go through a presentation very similar to the first workshop. And so we took some additional CIP items. I know that the town has produced a new CIP that fully reflects all the capital projects that will be needed for growth. So you'll see that reflected in the numbers here. And then we did issue a revised report July 1. So have a couple of slides for you guys. We'll go over the extraordinary circumstances that the town is facing. We'll look at the cost assumptions that went into the impact fee calculations. And we'll look at the existing and proposed fees and how they relate to nearby communities. So this presentation is based on the recommendations in the 2025 Utility and Municipal Impact Fee Study Revised Report dated July 1. The town is considering adopting a fee schedule as it relates to the police, parks, administrative facilities, water and wastewater impact fees. And the fees are increasing based on several primary factors. The town has been facing considerable population growth over the last few years, and that's expected to continue into the near future. There has been large scale improvements, so the town is needed to meet these demands of growth. And then inflationary cost pressures have impacted the capital improvement program significantly. So it's led to higher costs that the town has to recover through the impact fees. So the primary objective of this study was to update the town's police, parks, administrative facilities, water and wastewater impact fees. It was also to update the cost allocation methodology and review the historical assets and any planned improvements that is needed to meet the demands of growth. And by updating the impact fees, the town is minimizing the cost burden of new facilities needed for growth from falling onto existing residents and businesses. And this report follows statutory perimeters and general case laws that relates to the Florida impact fee statute. So impact fees are one-time charges, charged to new development to recover the costs of providing capital equipment needed to meet the demands of growth. Impact fees do not replace existing assets. They do not correct efficiencies in existing level of service. And they do not fund the ongoing operating and maintenance costs for each of the departments. And the impact fee statute outlines a rational nexus test, which essentially says that the town needs to prove that there is a need for the impact fees, that they will provide a benefit for new development, and then the cost recovered is proportionate to the demands placed on the system. So the general methodology for each of the impact fees is we calculate the total capital cost by looking at the existing investment into facilities and vehicles, as well as the future investment needed for future growth. We then allocate these costs to residential and non-residential using functional population methodology as well as census data. So functional population is a generally accepted way of calculating impact fees as it measures the amount of time that people spend across various facilities across the town. And then we divide these costs by the functional population unit. So we'll get a fee on residential on a per dwelling unit basis, and non-residential is generally on a thousand square feet basis. And the town currently has 29 non-residential land uses, and we are proposing to reduce that down to six to reduce administrative burden and simplification. So the police department has an existing investment of about $840,000. And in the next 10 years, there's plans to expand the existing station for an additional $3 million. And as the town grows, as the population grows, the city, the town will need to hire additional police officers in order to meet these demands. And so with that, they'll have to buy additional vehicles, which we include in the police impact fee calculation. And that is estimated to be about $1.4 million over the next 10 years. So that's resulting in the impact fees calculated as shown here. So for single family, you're getting about a 70% increase. And then on non-residential, you're also getting some of these significant increases largely across the board. And these are the six recommended land use classes. For Parks and Recreation, the town has an existing investment of about $2.9 million and has identified about $1.6 million of additional capital improvement projects that are needed to meet the demands of growth specifically. And that includes Pickleball Court, the Nature Preserve Pavilion, and additional trail and things like. So recreation impact fees are charged only to residential development. And you can see, even though the fee is decreasing, it is slightly higher than shown in the previous workshop, and you still have about a $1,000 fee. And the fee is decreasing largely due to changes in methodology from the last study due to significant updates to the impact fee statute in 2021. So some things have been excluded and some capital costs not been included in this calculation. The administrative facilities impact fee includes things like the town hall and meeting space. And so there's about a $2.1 million investment into existing facilities. And the town has some significant investment being added in the next 10 years, like new town hall facility, the expansion of the town meeting hall, and the public works facility. So that's resulting in the strong increases as shown on this table. And for non-residential, the existing fee is based on a flat fee per thousand square feet. So you'll see some large percentage increases. That's just due to going to the same cost methodology as applied to police. So for a single-family home, when looking at the municipal impact fees, you can see that the total impact fees is increasing by about $935. So even though the parks fee is decreasing, you're still getting a higher total impact fee for municipal side. And it's largely lease and administrative facilities. There's a significant investment needed in the near term, whereas the Parks and Recreation, capital investments are needed, but not to the same extent. So when compared to nearby communities, the existing impact fees for municipal fees is right around the middle of the comparison chart. But with the proposed increases, it's still on the higher middle end, but below some of the higher fees like Claremont, St. Cloud, and Oviedo. The upgrades to the water plant has increased cost assumptions from the last time. So it's about $7.9 million now. It's because we included some additional projects, all non-grant funded related projects. And then there's about $2.5 million of transmission improvements expected for additional capacity. And on the wastewater side, the fees were last updated or implemented in 2017 in association with the town providing wastewater services. And the cost of the improvement has exceeded the initial estimates that was included in the original fee calculation. So that's resulting in the higher impact fee. So the town has about $3.9 million in sewer assets right now. So that's resulting in about a 39% increase for water and wastewater. And so the water fee is slightly higher than shown in the last workshop. It's now increasing by about 43%. And when compared to nearby utilities, you can see that the existing Oakland fee is on the lower end of the chart. And with the proposed increases, it increases slightly. But that is largely due to the fact that Oakland is just a transmission impact fee. And the majority of these utilities on screen have both treatment and transmission. So you're still getting a good comparison to nearby communities, but you will be on the lower end of that chart. So when you look at the municipal and the utility impact fee comparison, you can see Oakland is on the lower end. And with the proposed fees, you're slightly higher than Longwood. So it's about a $2,000 increase in impact fees when we look at utilities and municipal impact fees. And that's again largely wastewater being a transmission-only impact. So today at the regular commission meeting is the first reading of the impact fee ordinance. And then the second reading would be July 22. And if the fees are approved at that meeting, then there'll be about a 90-day wait before implementation. That's the presentation I had, and it'll be available for any questions, but otherwise, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody want to go first? Questions?
Well, I just wanted to say thank you for taking another look at that. And you know, this is something that I've kind of talked about before I was even on the commission. I think it's just critical that we get these up. And I think that it really says something on the fact that when you look at the combined fees, that we're still on the lower side overall. And when you compare us to the other towns that we're being compared to, we're still very small, trying to do a lot of stuff. So I think it's commendable that we were able to go back and really get these numbers where they truly need to be. And we are still on the middle to lower end. So thank you to the town staff for their work and also your firm. So thank you very much. That's really all I was going to say.
I want to say the same thing. Thank you very much for all the work that the whole staff and everybody's been doing. And this is long overdue on how low we've been. And I still think we're the lower end, like Commissioner Keller has said. One of the things that I didn't point out last time that I wish I would have is the Parks and Recreation. I still think there, we shouldn't be cutting them so far down. I know that there's a formula or the investment we have of over $2.9 million. But we talk about that formula for the, you know, the capital improvement in the future. But we're not talking about the maintenance upkeep of the sidewalks, parks, structures of what we already have, which is listed there on page 33. Spear Park, Hawn Island, Hawn Island Entrance Park, Alder Park, Oakland Nature, Sub Street, Vanderly Park, Sadler Park, Arts and Heritage. Those are going to have a need for upkeeping and maintenance that is not part of the equation down here. That I know we were dropping it, but we shouldn't drop it that much. In my opinion, we should revisit that.
So let me, let me try to answer that. The, that would be considered maintenance, so it wouldn't be impact fee. It's, that was one of the first slides. There was, it has to have a nexus or a connection to, you know, additional facilities, not maintenance or operations.
But if Sal was saying, if, if we were to connect a sidewalk from a park to a park, a new sidewalk from a park to a park because of demand, a population demand, that would fall under an impact fee.
Yes, I believe it would.
Right. Not so much like, oh, we have a crack in the sidewalk. We need to replace this panel.
Correct.
How about additions to the park themselves, like let's say the canopy? We need for the, for the.
The, the additions to Spear Park and Sadler Avenue Park are already plugged into the.
Needed canopy sunshine, sun coverage for Wesley, for the.
Spear Park.
Correct. So those are addition. That'd be part of the impact fee?
I think it would be impact fee eligible, yes.
So is there a way for us to increase this impact fee somewhat?
So we have looked at the approved capital improvement program, and we have included like the Sadler Park improvements, the Oakland Nature Preserve Pavilion, additional trails. So we have looked at what the town has adopted for growth-related infrastructure, and that's what has been currently identified.
So any improvements to the existing parks would not be part of this formula?
If they were improvements that provided additional capacity. So if you added an extra swing set, if you added some additional playgrounds to the side, anything that would accommodate future growth could be included.
Yeah, my just, my question is really to staff. Can we get the, all the categories of the improvements? Can we get that dollar figure, all of them totals, like police?
Yeah, you're talking about the capital improvement plan. It was in the budget. We've updated it. I can get you a new capital improvement plan with what we submitted to them.
Okay.
And again, not to just keep repeating this, but my only, everything else is great. The Parks and Rec stuff really does bother me because there's a lot of stuff we could do for the residents here that could be deemed as new stuff, not just improvements. So we beat it to death, but I just wanted my opinion here.
Um, okay. I'm going to go down through my, my list here, page by page. And some of this might be questions for staff and maybe questions for Stephanie. So I know that looking at the ordinance, it says that takes effect September 10 after our adoption on the 22th of July. Is there, is there, is there, is there supposed to be a grace period of that? Is that right?
Yes, the controlling statute requires 90 days after, between the notice and the effective date.
Within that 90 days, then builders could come in and say, I'm just going to start pulling permits.
I'd, I'd have to look at which fee schedule would apply when it would switch over. But I do think that even though the ordinance would be pending at that time, because the statute requires that the effective date be pushed out, we would have to go under the existing fee schedule until that time. Sometimes you can go under.
The 90 days?
Yes.
I, I, the only one I can think of happening would be The Grove or Oakland Park, maybe whatever's finished in there. They're almost complete, but. I think case by case, I don't, then again, I don't know.
Let me just add to that. The, you know, the last time that we updated these fees, we kind of anticipated something like that. It didn't happen. It just didn't happen.
And you hope it doesn't, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, I, I, yeah. I mean, I can understand if it was like a long leaf, and it was a production builder, and they're like, oh, these are hitting. Let's save ourselves some money. Let's go ahead and permit all these and what was picked out.
Yeah, because I think, I mean, they would have to be almost prepared and ready to file them right now in order to make that.
Where those guys have plans off the shelf.
Right. But I think that all the homes right now are custom under the new developments. So I thought that they would have the time to get it all pulled together.
Right. So that's a saving grace, right?
Yeah.
So, yeah.
We do have the multifamily.
On, on, or straight, but I believe they're a little ways away.
Yeah.
90 days, right? Or after September?
Oops. Sorry. Just as an update to that, they're coming back through with a whole amendment to their original agreement, new design and everything. So they have to completely go back through the process. So there's no way they'll make it in 90 days.
The next one I have on here, and Mike, maybe you can answer this one. It is on Exhibit A of the page five. And it's, it's interlocal agreement with City of Claremont is on the wastewater fees. And I think it has, we're at $1,298. And in here, it, it states a comment where it says, "City of Claremont and Town for Revisions of Wastewater Services Day, October 22, interlocal agreement." That number of $1,298, that, that is, that takes into account Claremont's fees as well? So I guess if Claremont said, hey, we're going to increase our impact fees, they don't come to us and say, guess what, Oakland, you gotta pay us a little more money?
So I don't have a copy of the report in front of me. And it sounds like you're asking two questions.
Be?
Yeah. Claremont, I'll answer the second one. It's easier. Claremont notifies us 90, roughly 90 days in advance of when their new fees take effect, their new impact fees.
Okay. And with that, if Claremont came in and said, hey, we're, we're raising our fees $100 to you guys, at that point, we, we have the right to come back and say, we need to amend our impact fee for sewer? At that point, to say we have to cover that $100 instead of the town eating that $100?
Not really. The, the Claremont impact fee is a standalone impact fee. They pay whatever the Claremont impact fee is for treatment, and then we have our own transmission impact fee.
So this one's wastewater facilities per unit for town wastewater transmission and pumping facility plus the applicable city of Claremont wastewater impact fee pursuant to interlocal city of Claremont.
So I think what Mike is saying is that the developer pays whatever the impact fee is to Claremont at the time. So it's whatever their fee is, they're paying that directly.
So, so, okay, that's something different then. So if, if the developer were to come in and say, I need to, I'm hooking this, right? He's going to pay the town of Oakland $1,298, and he's going to cut a separate check to Claremont?
That's correct. Yeah.
Okay. So that's how, I, I, okay, that's, that clears it up then. That's how our process works, is they cut our impact fee number. And then if Claremont says we're raising 100, they cut whatever the impact fee is for Claremont.
Whatever they have in effect at the time of the building permit.
That was easy.
Good news.
Yeah, I mean, I just wanted to, I don't want to get on the hook of whatever that is for us paying that. Bear with me. The difference. Right, right, right. The Parks and Rec thing, it's, that's highlighted on mine. I just don't know why you can't leave it as is, but. Like that later on. Yeah, this is the, this is, this is, I don't know why I had this highlighted. Adopting less than the calculated rates would increase their reliance on general fund and other revenue sources to meet the demands of growth. 59 pages, guys. I'm on 23, right? Police, oh, we do. Geez, okay. Police. So one of the questions I have, and maybe Stephanie, you can, you can maybe answer this. So I didn't know, I did know, and you did mention in your report that impact, police impact fees, those impact fees could be used to expand or build a new police facility, department, building, whatever, because of the demand as well.
Yes, the additional capacity.
Right. And the same could be said for a public works facility, correct?
Uh, yes, that's included in the administrative facilities, in fact.
Administrative. So in those, you could combine the two, build one facility?
I would, I would be interested in Raftellus's opinion. I think that that's more on the accounting side than the legal side. I don't, from a legal perspective, I don't see an issue from a general standpoint. But getting into the specifics of the numbers, I would, would lean on Raftellus for that.
I would imagine if it is split and you have the allocation of what's one facility and what's the other, you could apply the appropriate impact fees to the appropriate ones. Because we see a lot of public safety complexes. So you have police and fire a lot of the time. So we'll come in and.
Good answer. That's what I was like.
But just to clarify, you're talking about like if we had the administrative town offices combined with like the police.
Well, I'm thinking at if you had police department, a brand new, a brand new police department and a public works department because of the expanding population of Oakland and, and, and the small public works department, small police department. Because they're, if you haven't been over there, they're.
Right.
They're, they're taxed. So and if you can take that and take it to a new facility, find a piece of property somewhere close by, and then you could just build a, like Groveland, right? As an example, that's one I'm thinking of is Groveland where they did the public works facility. On 50, yeah. So they did the public works and they have the police department that's in the same building. So I guess if you said, we have 2 million in, in police and 2 million in public works, you can just say, we're combining those, but yet here's the breakout between the two.
I think with just the accounting, making sure the numbers are well accounted for, you could do that.
Okay.
I think that would be easy to do.
Right, right. And I, and I think that, I think we're getting to that point, right? From what we have right here. So again, I know we beat the dead horse with the, with the parks thing. But I'm still, I'm still, and I think I speak for everybody on here, that how do you increase some population but you decrease an impact fee for a park? So that, I don't know why it bothers me. So it tells me, when I read the document here, it says, "All projects associated with replacement or refreshment, refurbishment of existing facilities have been excluded when the impact fee calculation is maintained a conservative approach." But I understand you ticked out what was there. But it's my understanding that if the playground equipment in Spear Park gets so much use that it wears out in three years, you should be, we could use impact fees to replace that.
It would have to be related a little bit more directly to growth compared to just replacing an asset. So if you built a bigger jungle gym, you could include, use impact fees to pay a portion of that. But just replacing and putting the same thing in probably would not be impact fee eligible.
Yes, I, I, from a legal perspective, that would be in the maintenance category. And when we're looking at impact fees, we are looking at improvements that are, are new items that will expand the capacity. And maintenance, the, the case law is very clear that you can't use impact fees for maintenance.
So just to clarify what the mayor said and kind of see how this works. So if we've got a three-swing swing set that wears out because we have so much more capacity and we build a five-swing swing set or a bigger, you know, facility for the kids to play in the park, would that, would that be able to use impact fees? Because I mean, you'd, you'd be expanding the size of the activities in the park for the fact that we have more, you know, people using it.
You could use it towards the expansion portion of that, yes.
Yes. So a portion of that, that total cost would be attributed towards sort of the maintenance. And so those would be the three existing, you know, spots for a child to swing. And then the additional two would be looked at as improvement. And so we would kind of bifurcate the funding that way.
So the cost of a additional, a new three-swing swing set and the additional cost of the five, you just subtract that out and use it for the indifference would be impact fees available?
Yes.
Which again leads to, you're still going to have to have more money because common sense is going to tell you that anything in any of the parks that you replace with more people is going to have to be bigger just right off the bat. So lowering it or keeping it the same, again, we just keep going over it. It just doesn't make sense.
It's, and, and the cost to, to build a park goes up, you know, as, 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 you know, if you were to build a new park, it's a lot more expensive than probably what you paid for the swing set that you put in the Spear Park three years ago, right? And I will tell you that from a resident standpoint, for myself, I, I do that. I do see that park getting used a lot more over the past five years between, and it's good. Don't get me wrong. I love seeing the people on the pickleball courts, tennis courts, and the pavilion having birthday parties on the swing sets. But I just see that expanding and growing and growing. And, and, and I'm not, I'm all for putting more parks in. And it doesn't have to be a big park. It could be pocket parks. It could be something like that. So, you know, looking at that, I just don't want us to sell ourselves short or do a disservice to ourselves on park impact fees by decreasing them, knowing that eventually Oakland's on, on the downward end of build-out for residential. And then once that's done, I don't think commercial kicks in at that point. Because I don't believe their, their parks are covered under commercial, correct?
No, they're not charged to commercial.
So, so we're, we're, we're at a period where maybe in, you know, 10, 15 years, we're, we're finished. So wherever we can grab, I, I'm all for grabbing. Not silent greedy, but whatever we can do. I don't know if there's a way to relook at that or, or if there's a different way to evaluate it.
It is largely just due to what you have improved to already construct. So one of the benefits is if you're not, if the growth slows down, you don't have to invest as much in the growth related. And you're still adding about 5,000 homes in the next 10 years. So that's still going to bring in a significant amount of revenue with a $1,000 park impact fee. So it is going down mainly just due to the change in methodology, but you are still collecting a good amount of revenue source to use for those projects.
And Stephanie, maybe this is, as far as utilizing those impact fees, there is a timeframe that you have to use impact fees by, and that is?
There is a timeframe. I, I apologize without looking at it. I don't want to speculate. And I don't know off the top of my head.
They're not, they, they do expire. There is an expiration that a developer could come in and say, I paid you this, and it's been 10 years, you haven't used it. I want you to give it back to me.
That is true. Yes.
Okay. So use them or lose them?
Yes.
Okay. Okay.
Do you know what the timeframe is? I don't know the exact timeframe, but yes, if they don't actually realize some of the improvements, you might give them back.
I mean, look, overall, I think increasing them is the way to go, whatever we can get. And I know that, looking at the other ones, and you did increase the park just slightly, it would be great just to keep it level like it is, but.
Just because we're not going to have.
We're not going to have.
We're not going to have them, I mean, we're done, this is, we're closing out pretty soon, there won't be an opportunity.
So is it my understanding that there is a change in that calculation? Is that what you've said, that is the methodology and, well, the calculation is based on the methodology?
Yes, so with the extreme updates in 2021, that's changed a lot of how scrutinized impact fees are. So we do take a more conservative approach with this. So some improvements, there's also the roads, mobility impact fee that I believe the town has that can collect like trails and stuff that might have been otherwise included in the park. So that is partially why the fee is decreasing, but that is something that you can recover. Trails and sidewalk connections, like you were talking, from a mobility fee, which I believe the town is currently exploring.
Here's the one dumbest question of all, I guess, is what you've given us is great. Was the commission, if we say, no, this is what we want it to be, can we not make that final decision?
Because of the Florida impact fee statute, it has to be based on recent and localized data. So this is, the fee is based on the most recent data, your approved capital improvement program. So that is what's reflective in the costs. And if there was some other document to prove that the town was very serious about specific improvements, that could be included, but it is just based on the most recent and localized data, based on the statute.
We don't really have a choice.
No.
Legal matters, right, I mean, statute says.
Yes, I would advise, I don't have any basis to dispute Raftellus's findings or advise that the town go in any different direction. And because we're on the record here publicly, I don't want to get into details of what I think the consequences might be of not following their direction. But there could be legal consequences.
Question. So we have the first reading of that tonight at the one commission meeting. And I think for that, I mean, we can certainly bring it up on the record, our displeasure and the part happening with these. And then I guess between that meeting and the second reading, maybe we can relook at it again, right?
Just revisit.
That's a hurt, right?
You could ask Raftellus to revisit it, I'm not sure that their professional opinion will change.
Good enough, all right, all right. I guess we'll close this meeting. If you can hold it to the regular meeting, now I think that would be more appropriate.
Ed Kulikowski, 51 Vandermeer Street. I just, I'm a little bit confused in the, in Michelle's presentation. I was looking at some of the items like fine dining. And it looked in your presentation that the numbers were a lot lower than what Attachment A states. Like we have quality restaurants, $30,000 for transportation. If you add all of those up, it comes out to $42,000, all of the administrative and the transportation and all the rest. For 1,000 square feet, and I, maybe I misread your slides, but I thought it was a lot less than that in the presentation. So I'd just like to confirm that the numbers in the Attachment A here are correct compared to Michelle's report. Thank you.
I think that's, that's good. I think what we could do, Ed, is to get the meeting started because this is an item on there. Maybe bring that back up in the regular town, will you be here? You'll be hanging out, okay, so then you can maybe answer some questions on that. Sound good, everybody? Yeah, all right, so let's close this, take like five minutes and then we'll. Okay, let's call to order the July 8, 2025 Oakland Town Hall Meeting. If I could please stand for the pledge or remain standing for invocation? All right, Kathy, good evening.
Good evening. Commissioner Keller?
Here.
Vice Mayor S. Butterfield?
Present.
Mayor Taylor?
Here.
Commissioner Ramos?
Present.
Commissioner McMullin?
All right, so first item on the agenda is the consent agenda. And this is our minutes from the 6/24/25 Town Commission Work Session and Regular Meeting, and also the renewal for the Metro Plan Funding Agreement for fiscal year 2025, 2026. Anybody have any comments or concerns?
I just want to make a comment on the Metro Plan or the Municipal Advisory Committee, that this is just a small price of what we've, you know, roundabout, just to say a few of the examples of the savings we get that we bring back from the Metro Plan Orlando. So thank you very much for signing this, Mayor.
Anybody else? Hearing none, we'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent agenda.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye, all right. First item under ordinances is ordinance 2025-04, which is the impact fees, which we just had the work session on. First reading for impact fees, and Kathy needs to read the ordinance, correct?
Yeah. An ordinance of the Town of Oakland, Florida, amending section 14-183, impact fee schedule of chapter 14 of the Town of Oakland Code of Ordinances, making findings amending the town's administrative facilities, police, parks and recreation, water and wastewater impact fees, providing for authorization of towns officials, providing for conflicts, codification, severability, and providing for an effective date.
Thank you, all right, who wants to go off, lead first?
I'll start with the same thing, just to put on record that the park and recreation amounts don't seem to be quite fair. Hopefully, can take another look at it, whether it changes or not is one thing, but I just want to make sure that I am on the record that we don't think that's enough.
I agree, for the record, we don't agree with the price of the impact fee being so low. And we would like for it to be revisited and changed if possible.
Okay, so, yeah, I think all of us sitting up here would like to have that park impact fee either maintain its current be or revisited again. We understand the impact fees are based on CIP capital improvement projects that dictate that. I don't know if our pot works wants to speak on any ideas or anything, that maybe we can try to keep that at that rate? Or? Put you on the spot, Mike?
What exactly is the question?
Are there any other ideas, Mike, that we could do to try to keep those?
So.
Because they're all based on what?
Yeah, yeah. So I think if you look at the parks and rec in the same light as we just talked about in the workshop with a public safety building, we acknowledge the need for a public works facility and a new police station, but we really don't know where it's going to go, you know what I mean? So I think if Raftellus could go back and take a look at that, and we could, you know, possibly set aside an amount of impact fee to cover any additional parks. There are none on the west side of the turnpike. I think that would be a prime place to expand your impact fees in purchasing land for a new park or parks. You know, we have a lot of land out there that's in our joint planning area agreement with the county that will eventually be annexed into Oakland as well. So, you know, you've got to think about those folks. So I think that's about the only opportunity that I see.
Okay, it's worth looking at.
I have a question for Raftellus. I know that, you know, refurbishing the old equipment on our old parks may not be part of the capital improvements, but adding new equipment, not additional swing, but our parks are pretty big. I mean, Spear Park's pretty big, to add more equipment, and again, that would put the canopy sun coverage over the equipment existing as new, a capital improvement, it's an improvement to the old.
Every idea out there.
Want to leave nothing on the table.
So additional infrastructure could likely be included in impact fee calculation? I'm not 100% sure on where sun shade would possibly fall under that, just because it might just be enhancing what's already there. But adding a second swing set, adding some monkey bars, a splash pad, if those kind of improvements would be more likely, what would be included? Anything reasonable that the city would expand with?
Okay, thank you.
I did want to clarify something that you mentioned during the work session. So, because connectivity and the trails are such a huge part of the town. And you did say that, you know, obviously connecting the new neighborhoods or to Mike's point, connecting the west side and somehow connecting, you know, things to make sure that all of our residents within the boundaries of Oakland have that connectivity that we consider such a big part of our town. Is that not fall under parks and recreation? Or, I wasn't sure, I was kind, after you said that, I was kind of rethinking that.
It depends how the mobility transportation fee is set up. So you can either collect it in parks, we've seen trails be included in parks. But if it's included and a transportation fee, then it can't be in both.
Is it currently included in our transportation as transportation and mobility? Or is it something that we haven't addressed yet?
I don't know for certain how the current fees are taking that into account, but we are about to start a transportation fee study. And the intent was to include those kind of projects. of projects with transportation, so trails, because people are moving more towards a mobility fee that includes trails, walking, pedestrian, bikes, more than just roads.
So, that could address some of our parks and recreation concerns, because again, the connect, because like, I know in my neighborhood, the town required us to have extensions of the trail that come through the neighborhood, you know, with the new neighborhoods we have, you know, currently being developed and future, you know, things that we may want to do, I know sad, the Sadler projects already include, but that's part of connectivity too, and just maybe that's where, you know, again, I guess it's one pot or the other pot, but it may be a way to enhance some of our impact fees by adding that into impact fees as trails and stuff rather than mobility, but again, you're the expert on that, so.
That is the intent going forward, is to include things like trails, so if you're thinking of trail expansions, that thing, I do think we include some trails in our parks fee, but there's a level of difference in making sure that there's no overlap. So, a lot of connectivity bicycle paths will likely be more transportation, but we'll make sure that there's no overlap or things that are not in parks.
I know there's also been discussion of connecting Sadler to tubs and coming down tubs so that there's connectivity to the trail, you know, there's a lot of things that I'm assuming you guys have already thought of and put in there, but just making sure that we are covering all the bases and every?
The trail on tub, but Sadler, the new park does connect to Longleaf, you're?
But it hasn't been completed.
Yeah, that's what we want.
Right.
That's what we want to clear.
That is already in there. That's already in there.
Sadler's already in there, but like coming down Tub Street, connecting, you know, Sadler to the trail, because we talked about having that whole loop that goes completely around.
That's, that's in there.
Okay. Just again, trying to find other ways.
There are some identified CIP projects that, how they base the amount on, and it's my understanding that in order to justify the rate, you're basing them on the amount of CIP projects you're going to do, or CIP projects that you may have planned. And I think what Mike is suggesting is knowing that there is this growth happening out towards the west of town and other side of the turnpike, there's nothing out there that cost us a park unless it's inside the community, that the town could at that point in time, land bank a piece of property and purchase it with impact fees with the knowledge that that will be used as a park?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, is that legally right?
Yes.
Okay.
Them yeses.
So, we could look at the second reading, identifying, is that a possibility?
I would default to the attorney about adopting the first reading of the ordinance now with the fees presented in the ordinance and how that would affect the next part.
So, I want to make sure that I'm understanding the question correctly. Are we discussing looking at potential improvements or expansion of capacity that is not currently in the CIP and factoring that into, okay, into the impact fees? Then I have a question for Raftellus, is that consistent with your methodology, or do you need to rely only upon what is currently in the approved CIP?
If there is reasonable plans to purchase additional land, if that's something that the city has more significant plans for, we are currently basing everything on the CIP, but it's not the only thing that we can include, but it does have to be a reasonable plan that the town will follow through on that, which is usually where we default to a CIP, because it's an adopted document.
Okay, based on that answer, it sounds to me like it would be logistically and feasibly difficult to do that before the second reading, simply because the town would have to have a more formal plan in place, and that would require some discussion and consensus by you all in order to move forward, and so we're sort of talking about basing a calculation off of a plan that has not been formalized or?
And is it worth extending just to the comments and conversations we had in the work session? Do we want to push, because it looks, sounds like to me we'd have to push out our timeline, we'd kind of have to go back to another first reading and to the concerns of the developments, are we going to lose one, lose that opportunity to wait for getting the money for this?
So, correct, and I think that's where you were about to go was, hey, so you made a comment about transportation impact fees that you're studying, right? So, you got TIFs that you're looking at, and they're going to be coming up when?
We haven't issued the full PO, I don't believe, but we are in the process of getting that approved, and it would probably be like, I can't give an exact estimate, but it would be a few months.
So, it will be, say, six months? Okay, so you're going to come back before us again and say, we're suggesting you guys increase transportation impact fees or something to that effect, right?
Yes.
Okay. Okay, so at that time, you can then, when we revisit parks at that time, we take parks out of this and revisit parks?
I'm not sure, since as the attorney mentioned, it was public record, I don't know.
Because this is the data that Raftellus is providing about your dual rational nexus, that is the language that's used by the courts, beginning in the Supreme Court cases called Nolan and Dolan, and coming down over the years, Raftellus is advising that your dual rational nexus calls for these lowered fees, and I believe that you would be risking a legal challenge if you were to adopt only the fees that are being raised and not adopt the fee that you are being advised to lower.
Right, so if we, if we were to adopt the fees as stated tonight, and then at that transportation study, we have evidence at the point to say, hey, we need to increase our parks fees as part of the transportation fees. I'm trying to work it out where it doesn't sound shady.
Can it be amended?
Right.
The Florida impact fee statute does outline that the fees can't be increased more than once every four years unless there's extraordinary circumstances, and since the study was, it would have been a few months old, there probably wouldn't be many extraordinary circumstances to.
Yeah, and I don't want to sacrifice for two.
But, sorry, but another point, sorry, I mean, in a rookie mayor, but, so, to the mobility conversation, which is part of the, so we could get money for trails and access, that would be part of the mobility that's part of transportation, correct?
Yes.
So, we could still get money there that would be impacting for trails and mobility that is part of kind of our park system in our town, because it's all connected, so that is something that could be addressed in the upcoming transportation study.
Yes, that would be looked at.
Want to do an 80/20 rule on this?
Yeah. Don't take what we got.
I don't want to leave four years on the table.
You got us in check, I don't know.
And the town is anticipating about 5,000 homes over the next 10 years, and with the proposed impact fee, you would be collecting about $5 million, so that is significant amount of money to do the improvements that we have included in the study and probably any additional ones that pop up in the next few years.
Yeah, okay, I'm seeing that here in this, okay. All right, thanks, any other questions before I open it up? No? Okay, so it is, it is a public hearing, so anybody have any comments they'd like? Yes, on that bed?
What's your name again?
My name is Ed Kulikowski, 51 Vandermeer Street, Oakland. So, I'm referring to Exhibit A here, and I'm looking at some of the figures, and it seems to be a little bit out of balance somehow with the goals that Oakland has set up. For instance, if I look on page eight of the ordinance, and we're talking about quality restaurants, the fees, quality restaurants is one of the businesses, the kinds of business that we want to attract Oakland, and yet we have a $30,000, almost $31,000 fee under roads and transportation for impact. And if I add in the other, the other administrative and other bits that are included here, it looks like we would be asking a new business to come in, a desirable business from our viewpoint, to pay almost $42,000 of impact fees per thousand square feet of restaurant. So, if you've got a 3,000 square foot restaurant about the size of your house, that would be almost $150,000, which is going to be a real discouragement to a restaurant, something like Market the Table, or Crooked Can or something like that, that's not a chain restaurant, not a big organization. So, and then if I look down to the industrial here, I see General Light Industrial, they're like a couple thousand dollars. Something seems out of balance to me in our plan here, and I wish the commission could address that somehow. I know there's a formula for this stuff, but somehow this doesn't seem to be promoting the objectives that we've discussed for our community.
Okay.
Thank you, Ed. You know, for years here on the board, we've always wanted to have a high-quality sit-down restaurant, mom and pops, not a fast food, I mean, I can see the impact fee for the fast food here is $130,000, and if you put 2,000 square feet or 3,000, that's close to half a million dollars, and we're discouraging that because we don't want that. But, and this is a question for our attorney or Raftelli, we can't increase, but we can decrease if we choose to?
You can, yes, that, the decision to decrease would be within your discretion, where we have to rely on Raftellus's expertise would be when we want to increase fees or keep fees the same where the data is showing that they should be lowered.
And this is revisited every four years. I mean, I'm just saying, if we want to bring in a high-quality restaurant, we should give them a break at least these four years for now, if not, we're not even going to see one.
I think what Ed is referring to is under roads and transportation, which we are not looking at tonight, just to be clear, that that is what's going to be upcoming. So, there may be a different methodology applied when we get to that section, but we're not looking at those numbers tonight.
Thank you.
But they are part of Exhibit A, which is part of the ordinance, which?
But they're existing, they're existing, they're not changing.
These are existing numbers in here?
Yes.
Okay.
Can I?
Let's finish this one, because I have a follow-up.
Yeah. Oh, so going back to that comment about lowering, if you want to lower, let's say that quality restaurant comes in, and right now his gross, retail gross area on, well, that's the roads wastewater, let's just say, or roads impact fees are that, and any other impact fees, water, whatever, you're saying that the commission then has the ability to sit there and go, well, it's $30,000 for you to do your restaurant impact fees, but yet we have the ability to sit there and negotiate with you and say, we want you in here really, really bad, so we're going to give you 15,000, I guess half.
I apologize, I misunderstood your question. I?
That was my question, or?
I understood the question to be of a general nature. Does the town have discretion with regard to lowering impact fees at the time that they're adopted? After the impact fees are adopted, the town really should treat everyone equally under the adopted fee schedule, and so that means whatever category you fall into, you've got to pay those fees. We wouldn't want to get into any sort of scenario where someone could claim discriminatory actions, treating certain types of businesses differently from other types of businesses or entities.
That's why this four years crucial to give someone a break, even across the board, and we can revisit four years from now. I know that this is not, at least, you know, this is not the time, but this is something that I need to know, we need to know.
I would, would want to do some legal research on these specific question of, it sounds like you're asking not, would it be appropriate to not charge impact fees for a restaurant where you would maybe charge it for a different type of use? Is that the question?
Or lower the?
Or lower them?
Yes, for the impact fee for a high-quality restaurant, again, if it's 3, 4,000 square feet of a high-quality restaurant, they can get discouraged coming in already investing $150,000 in the, in the impact fee. We want to not discourage, and we want to encourage them to come here, maybe four years from now, we can change it after we have a couple of sit-down restaurants.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
I would want to research that question with the question of sort of discriminatory treatment in mind. I know that it is within your discretion to lower a general, an entire fee category generally, so as pertaining to all, all users, all developers. When you're getting into distinguishing between different types of users, that is a question that I just want to do some more research to make sure that I'm not giving the wrong guidance.
Thank you. Okay, and then your chart shows where we compare to other impact fees with other municipalities that are relatively local. Okay, sorry, Ed.
Hey.
Particular category is, you know, roads and transportation, but, you know, I just think we have to also be mindful of the fact that basically where any of these entities would go, probably along 50 or whatnot, there is no infrastructure there at all. And so, while we want to encourage certain businesses, to your point, we also have to make sure that we are covering those infrastructure costs to put that entity there, otherwise that will fall back on our residents. So, it's a matter of whether you want to pay it, Ed, or we get the new entity to pay it, so we, I just think we have to be, we have to make sure that we're covering the cost that, that it's going to cost to bring that entity to town through infrastructure and balancing the, what we do get as far as new businesses.
Okay, well, that brings me to my next question, if I may, which is, we've got a couple of developments that have been approved, Tubman Fourth Street and Franco's project with his 90 apartments there with retail slash restaurant space available on the bottom floor of those. How does the impact fee get applied to the buildings that are going to be constructed? The certain amount of retail space, but that retail space could be, you know, a shirt shop, or it could be a restaurant. How, what is approved now? I'm trying to get a feel for what is approved now for, for the development that's behind the Grove on 50, and what, how these impact fees relate to businesses that might be located in those buildings?
Is that like the question that, the 90 units, correct? The building that's 90 units Franco Scala has on 50? Is that impact fee would be just for the 90 units, would I include a restaurant, or the restaurant would have to pay an individual impact fee on its own?
That's how it would work, if you put a Jersey Mike sub shop in there, and they needed 2,000 square foot of space, and if I did the calculation at 1,000 foot at?
Forty some odd dollars.
Throw a number out there, $4,000, right?
Yeah.
So, then they would have to pay $8,000.
Right, right, but it's $42,000, so I don't think Jersey Mike's going to go in there.
Well, but it's based on the permitting process, so when those, you know, the building's built, and as those retail spaces are developed, they have to go through a permitting process, and that's when the impact fees apply. But they put in that they're going to put a retail shirt shop, or it's, those apply, will go when they go through the permitting process.
Yeah. Well, yeah, I think the permitting department, so here, let's, let's say it's water impact fee.
Okay.
And then there's, let's say that same sub shop needs a one-inch meter.
Meter, right.
And it's two and a half ERUs per, at a cost of $3,245, or two and a half ERUs, correct? But let's say he needs five ERUs, because he's going to be doing a lot of dishwashing and cooking and stuff like that, and then that number would double, correct? From $3,245 times two to cover the five ERUs. Is that how it works, or is it prorated, like he only needs three, he doesn't need two and a half, he needs a half? So, I'm sorry, I'm looking at page four, well, I'm sorry, that's wastewater facilities, I apologize, but Saint Remus. And that number's based on one ERU?
Sorry, I do not have the?
Sorry, I do not have the ordinance in front.
I'm looking at page 20, it was 26 on the packet, but it's page four.
For the water?
Let's just look at wastewater. I'm on wastewater, I'm looking at wastewater.
All right, for the $1,298?
Yeah, let's just say it's, it's a one-inch, it's a, um, it's a one-inch, fees for commercial multifamily, except single-family. So I'm looking at the, the restaurant that Ed's talking about, the, the sub-shop. And that particular person needs a one-inch water meter, right? Because the, the, the idea is, whatever water he has coming into the building is gonna be going out of the building, and you're gonna charge him for the water going out of the building into the sewer system to be treated. And that meet, and that one-inch meter at a cost of $2.50, $2.50 in ERU is-
That's the equivalent unit to, uh, single-family home is one ERU, a three-fourths inch, five-eighth inch meter is one ERU. So the one-inch would be 2.5 times the amount of flow.
Okay, so-
Fee to the right would be the fee charged based on that meter.
It's just, it's a $3,245 one-time fee?
Yes.
Okay, all right, so it's not doubled or anything, saying he needs X amount of ERUs? Okay.
Who would pay the impact for the road? I mean, go up a page, road and transportation, would that be the original building permit? Or would that be Jersey Mike's paying 2,000 feet times $30,000? Same, I mean, you go up a page, page number, page number eight.
Knowing that we're gonna be revisiting impact fees for transportation.
Sorry, can you repeat the question, please?
Oh, say the impact fee for the road with the original building permit, that does the 90-unit building pay for that? Or would the Jersey Mike's, I'm just using an example, need 2,000 square feet, would have to pay $60,000, because it's $30,000 right now, $30,689 for a quality restaurant.
Yeah, I would believe it would be who is issuing the permit. So if a developer comes in and puts in a bunch of buildings, they would be paying it. If Jersey Mike's themselves came in and put in a building, they would be paying for it. It's whoever is issuing, whoever writing the permit would pay the fee. And if someone comes in and leases that space later, they're not paying the impact fee. It's at the time of building.
So if the developer was smart, he would come in and say, "I'm making it all commercial, because that's the lowest I have to pay," right? And then Jersey Mike's comes in and says, "I have to build out this space." And he pays the difference.
Yes.
Got it. So if it was commercial, uh, which may be the lowest, um, impact fee, like just office or whatever, trying to find it here.
General office.
General office, what do you have? You have general office?
Yeah, on page six of the-
Yeah, okay, so I'm, I'm looking, yes, office, uh, 100,000 square feet or less. At a thousand square foot is $5,369.
So if the building use changed, they would pay the difference? So if it went from an office space to a restaurant, most of the time I would default to city staff on how they do it, but I would imagine they would pay the difference.
So city staff would have to look at that and catch that at that point in time with permitting and saying, "Hey, you paid impact fees on commercial."
Yes, because I assume they would-
Restaurant is $12,000, you gotta pay that difference.
Yes.
$5,000 to make, yeah, got it, okay, all right. Okay.
So, so just to make sure I understand, that means that every subsequent tenant in that building needs to pay a new impact fee? Based upon, that's what, that's what I just heard.
Depending on their use. So if I-
Okay, okay, so, so I'm a restaurant, and I don't make it. Now I turn into shirt shops, and my fee is now $1,000 instead of $30,000. My impact fee, what happens to those other $29,000? Who, does somebody get it back? Help me understand.
It's part of, that's, I mean, so the, from what I understand, and correct me if I'm wrong, when the developer builds the building, they more than likely pay the impact fees for road and transportation, because they're building the actual building. The tenant who occupies the space, then they have a different permitting, you know, fees, because their impact is the actual wastewater use and things like that that will come with the occupancy of the space, right? The building would be the developer who would pay the impact fees for road and transportation. Is that correct? And then once the spaces are rented, you know, leased out, the permitting would be those folks?
Trying to-
No, this is, no, I, I really think this is really good to understand. It really is, because it, yeah, oh, Kathy.
Hey. So the way that impact fees work is whoever's making the initial impact has to pay it. Now, if the developer is building a, let's say, a parcel of buildings, depending on the use and the size, they'll pay it based on our schedule. So let's say that that was an office building for doctors, okay? And there was no sewer there. Now a restaurant wants to come in and they're allowed. They now have to pay a sewer impact fee. They don't need to pay any additional fees unless they're going to increase the impact of the building, or they're going to have additional needs. So like, let's say there was never water there, and now they're, they were on a septic, or a, on a well, and they now need water. They will now have to pay the water impact fees. So it's kind of as it comes, but normally, in the day that we're in, all of the impact fees are paid upfront based on the use, the size, and the developers who usually shells it out. But once that money's paid out, you don't get it back. It's a one-and-done.
In essence, some of these impact fees that we have here, these size numbers are for a standalone restaurant, not combined with a mixed-use building.
So my understa-
Building's gonna have a menu of whatever they add, or whatever they permit.
So it depends. So my understanding, and I could be wrong, I would have to default to Stephanie on this, but mixed use, you would have to pay based on the use. So if you're going to have a restaurant on the bottom, you have to pay that, right? And then if you're gonna have residential on the top, then you have to pay the residential impact fees that will impact the town. So normally, it would just be water and sewer for those. But the restaurant will also have to pay water and sewer, transportation, whatever. Yes, that's my understanding. I could be wrong, I don't know. We haven't had mixed use, so I don't know, but, um, but it's all based on what it is, how big it is, and all of that. Those are our existing fees, and so they're probably gonna get adjusted. So they may be more, they may be less, they may stay the same. They might get reduced, they might just get all lumped together. So it's just, you know, depending on what we need and what we're expecting in the town.
Yeah, I can see that. And I think it would be based on, if I were the developer and I were building a mixed use, I would make it all commercial, the lowest, the lowest impact, because I only shell out whatever I have to shell out. And then if Ed comes and says, "I'm opening up a sub-shop," then I'm gonna say, "Ed, I've already paid $34,000 in impact fees for transportation. You're opening that, you're gonna get your permit, and they're gonna make you pay more."
Well, I think what I heard was, "I'm gonna have to pay for my new water connection, possibly, or my new sewer connection."
Yeah, because you're, because-
Transportation for that building, which is the biggest number on this chart, has already been paid under the commercial use initially.
Is that correct, Stephanie?
Is that correct?
Can you repeat the question?
Sure, sure. I'm, I'm Developer Joe, okay? And I build a building with apartments up and retail down. I'm gonna say, "All I've got is retail downstairs, that's all I'm planning for right now." And so I build my building, and I have space available. And I paid the transportation fee for the retail shirt shops, okay? And then, six months later, another fellow comes in and says, "Well, I want to put a restaurant in." What I heard tonight is that I have to pay the impact for, for my sewer and for my water, but I don't have to pay the impact for transportation, because that was already paid transportation for the, um, for the retail. It was initially with the construction of that structure.
Without taking a comprehensive look at the entire code, it's really hard for me to offer an opinion about that factual-
That's what it's, that's what it's sounding like. So, so if I'm a restaurateur, I'm never building my own building.
I will, I will-
You're leasing, you're gonna lease the whole time. You're not going to build your own standalone building.
So I will say that when a property is being redeveloped and going through a redevelopment process, where maybe they're needing a rezoning and a comp plan amendment, or, or some sort of approval, at that time, I, I have just sort of anecdotally, in my experience, seen impact fees be revisited. There will be a, a transportation study that's done, and a second look that's done. And so, um, there is that potential, certainly, depending on the facts.
And in the, the municipality, or like, for example, Orange County, doing it right now, there's a transportation, transportation impact fee study. And then that goes, to get your capacity and encumbrance letter, you have to submit this study in a two-mile radius, and they'll sit there and they'll say, "Okay, well, you're gonna impact this amount of roads because of your use. You owe us $35,000, $60,000, whatever, for us to help take care of, maintain all this impact that you are providing on the road with your new-"
Your redevelopment and your new-
Redevelopment service, whatever, business or whatever. But that's, but I- All right, I'll throw, I'll throw another monkey wrench into it. What if I, what if I came in and I said, "I'm not gonna build it out. It's just gonna be cold, dark shell, corn shell. I'm not, I'm not building anything out. And I'm gonna have whoever comes in build it out. I'm not paying any." Is that, is that a, is that a possibility?
It depends on what you're planning and-
That's just what he was describing, but my bottom floors, just shell, it's just-
Unfinished shell, which I see a lot of those mixed go up all over the state. Unfinished, till someone comes and pulls a permit for whatever.
Then Ed comes and says, "I want to open up my sub-shop here." Okay, so Ed, it's a cold, dark shell, I'm gonna lease you 2,000 square feet. At that point, then I guess Ed would have to pay the impact that his business is putting onto the roads, onto the sewer system, onto the water system, and pay that impact.
So, maybe, that would be a discussion between you and, and Ed, right? Because you are either leasing your building, and you would have to come up to that agreement. However, as Stephanie mentioned, you have to pay all the impact fees before you can move forward with a project. So if the town is requiring you to pay all of these impact fees before you can build your, your shell, then no, you can't just forfeit, "Oh, I'm not gonna pay my transportation impact fee, because it's gonna go to this guy." So we require all of your impact fees to be paid before you even receive a building permit.
I don't know what I'm building. I don't know what's coming in there, so is there a default?
You would have to know what you're building before you even submitted to the town.
Know what I'm building, I'm building 90 units above, and I'm building, bottoms of my retail is shell. I'm not building out the shell.
That's fine. A retail would be what you're building, so it would fall within the category.
I don't know if I'm building retail. I'm just, it's just gonna be open.
You can't ju- You have to designate a building, you can't just build a block.
Is there a default that you should adopt that says, "I don't care if it's gonna be shell, but we're gonna default to general office?"
Maybe that might be in the, in the building, in the planning and zoning.
So it could be the default is the least expensive. If I own that building, I'm looking for the least, lowest category, and let Ed pay the difference. But, but, what's the name of your restaurant gonna be, Ed? Because I'm going there, so.
So, yeah, so we're kind of getting in the weeds here.
Yeah, we are, absolutely.
This discussion needs to have Wade Trim representing.
Correct.
They can answer all those questions.
Okay.
The other thing, because, you know, multi-use is, is new to us, that fees are the fees, but we probably want to have some sort of a workshop that we can all really kind of understand, is because there's five of us up here that are asking complete different questions and going in different directions. And, and none of the answers are really concrete. So maybe we have a time when we can sit, and we have some time and talk, and hammer that out, and have some sort of a schedule on, if it does this, it does this. Otherwise, it's gonna be a guess every time, and that's where you end up. Okay.
Thank you. You're welcome, Ed. Thanks for the, thanks for-
Good.
Thanks, Ed. It was a good discussion.
Medium rare, Ed, okay?
But I, okay, so, yeah, I, I do, and I, and it might be something, but Before Us Tonight, you can't let this slip away, because you, you gotta recoup what you're getting. And, and again, um, so Before Us Tonight is approving, or not approving, this ordinance for the first reading until the second reading happens. But, um, yeah, I, I think we've kind of covered, and there's all sorts of different scenarios to think, and it's probably something that has to be, that needs to be done at some point to figure out, you know, with all this development that is going to come. It's a matter of time. We need to have our ducks in a row.
Get ahead of the-
Yeah, you gotta get into it, so you're not stuck in saying, "Oh, how am I doing this?" Oh, yeah. And it might be Gabby talking to somebody at the City of Orlando, or whatever, "How do you guys do this?" or whatever. Winter, Winter Garden.
I, I mean, I could. More than likely, the best person's gonna be planning and zoning, because they ultimately issue or designate the impact fees. Um, and then they issue credits if there are any per our code. So, um, that would be the best contact. And I mean, I can definitely, you know, help them or be in conjunction with them, but they would be the best resource.
All right, so with that, we'll bring it back to the table. And anybody like to entertain a motion for ordinance 25-04, impact fees?
I'd like to make a motion to accept the first reading for the ordinance 2025-4, impact fees.
Second?
I'll second it.
All in favor? All right, okay. So-
Quick questions, Ed, by the way.
That's good. That's good stuff.
You made me realize how much I don't know.
All right. Moving on to the next ordinance on the agenda, which is 2025-03. It's the second reading, uh, public hearing for public camping and sleeping. Any questions or anything? I believe we had a great detailed report last week by the chief. Thank you very much, um, from the chief. So, um, any questions or comments on that, from anybody? No? Oh, I'm sorry. Oh, that's right.
An ordinance of the Town of Oakland, Florida, adopting Section 46-3, prohibition against public camping and public sleeping of Chapter 46. Offenses and miscellaneous provisions of the Town of Oakland Code of Ordinances, providing for prohibitions against public camping and sleeping, and for methods of enforcement. Providing findings, intent, and definitions, and providing for codification, conflicts, severability, and an effective date.
Thank you. Next time, just cut me off. All right, any questions from anybody? Okay, so it is a public hearing, we'll open up the public. Anybody have any questions about the, uh, public camping or sleeping? Okay, hearing done, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the table for a motion.
I'll make a motion to accept ordinance 2025-03, second reading, public hearing, public camping and sleeping.
All right, all in favor?
All right.
All right, all right. So moving on to other policy matters. This one is the Florida League of Cities 2025 Annual Conference, which is coming to Orlando in, um, August, I believe. So Elise, do you want to explain this one to us? Oh, I'm sorry, Kathy. All right.
Yes, hi. This is to designate, um, the mayor or commissioner for the, um, Florida League of Cities Annual Conference next month, which is August 14th through the 16th.
Does anybody have any comments, or anybody want to nominate somebody?
Commissioner McMon, are you okay with it again, or?
Actually, I was the one last year, yeah.
And Commissioner McMon, you're, you're on the board, right?
Yeah.
So are you allowed to, if, even if you were nominated? Okay, okay. Okay.
I'm sorry, it's not butch, it's just you are present when they have the last business meeting to, um, and it's the different ordinances and the different, uh, rules they may make some changes on, and so you're just there present to represent your area.
I know that it's local.
Yeah, I'm planning on attending as well.
I think Elise is gonna go as well, so, and it's all good, if you want to continue.
I mean, I did it last year, I'd like for one of you guys, if it's local this-
I mean, I did it last year. I'd like for one of you guys, if it's local this time around, it would be great. There's, there's a lot to learn, a lot of people to meet there. So it doesn't take long. It's not.
Recommend Commissioner Keller.
I'd be happy to do it.
Okay. Anybody else?
I will make that motion that we make our representative, Commissioner Keller.
Awesome. Yeah, second anybody?
I'll second it.
Favor?
All right.
Great. Thank you very much. So there is, before we get the public forum, there is another policy matter I wanna kinda bring up real quick. That's not on the agenda here and it's due to the recent, and, and I don't, I'm not on Facebook or anything. I don't follow. But I get calls and people sending me screenshots, but it's the recently opened vape shop down on Remington Road. So I know that we are looking at finding out if that is a legal use in town or a use that can, is accepted at town. I know that we have ordinances on cannabis shops in town as well. I don't know what's in there or anything like that. Chief, I don't know if you have any insight on anything going on there?
To this point, there, we found there's nothing illegal there. We are working with the state to make sure that everything is in line, but as far as what they're selling, it's all legal.
Okay. So it's, it's one of those that, for me personally, I don't really like it in our town. I think it starts a degradation in, in a town. I mean, if you need that, you can go to Clermont or Winter Garden. And, and I don't know if there's a, if we need to look at some sort of emergency or not emergency ordinance, but an ordinance very, very soon that stipulates. Stephanie.
I will, what, what type of ordinance are you contemplating?
And please speak up, everybody, but I'm, I'm thinking none in town.
All right. So some, some immediate thoughts that I have on that. I am concerned about certain types of legal challenges. And I also am concerned, my, my first analysis that I would wanna make would, would this, would such a restriction be permissible under SB one eighty? SB one eighty was, was recently adopted by the legislature and approved by the governor. And it has some very broad preemptions about regulations that local governments are not allowed to adopt relating to land use over the next two years. That bill, as it is currently drafted, will expire in twenty-twenty-seven. So I would need to make sure that such a restriction would be permissible under SB one eighty and then go from there.
Okay. I'm, I'm not pleased with it at all. And if we find ways around it, I mean, did they have to pull a permit to put that shop in there and can we increase the impact fee on them?
Can, can I drop in here real quick?
Yeah.
I don't want there to be a misnomer. They're not, it's not a vape shop. It is a convenience store. They are selling, it's the Citco that is operating as a convenience store. And they're also selling a large amount of things that are associated with a vape shop, but their, their primary business is not a vape shop. I'm not sticking up for them by any means, but we have to be very careful when we address businesses just because of some of the items they're selling. Now, they are, that is a Citco gas station. And when you walk in, half of it is operated as a convenience store and then there's a large portion that is selling what similar items that you see at a, at a smoke shop. But it doesn't make it illegal. It's not pleasing to, to some, as I read the social media as well. But we can't discriminate and say, because you're selling something that we don't like, although it is legal, you can't. Because then we would, in essence, tell them, you have to shut down your whole convenience store. And that's, that would be very, very bad.
Okay, so, and I get that. If I was the owner of that property, you'd do what you have to do to make ends meet, right? What if, you know, you go in there and you're saying, I'm, I'm under the license of a convenience store, but yet more than fifty percent of my store is vape or, or a different use.
Or a smoke shop.
Or whatever. I mean, at that point.
And we would have to dive deeper into as far as, and that's why I said we're working with the state. I'm not trying to get too much into that, what we're doing with the state. But they would be able to guide us and give us better advice as far as what percentage of what needs to be sold to qualify as a certain store. But, you know, their operating is a convenience store and they have, so. Smoke items. They're not, so far what I've seen, since all the social media stuff have come up, all of it is legal. It's no different than what they're selling at racetrack circle. Okay, it's just a less volume. You know, the vape pens and things like that, you can go any store and get that, as long as it's not a CBD derivative and as long as it's not cannabis, you know, things like that. And it's not, best we can tell, it's nicotine. If we, that's, that's one of the things that we're doing is looking into making sure that it is just nicotine being sold and not anything that's a controlled substance or illegal. At this point, we don't have that. So like I'm saying, we just have to be careful when it, they're, they're not open just for smoking items. They're, they sell gas, they sell chewing gum, they sell soda. You know, we can't, we have to be careful when we go in and tell people what you can and can't sell if the items are legal under state statute. And they are.
I was going to add, I, I believe your code distinguishes, as the chief was alluding to, between nicotine products and cannabis or marijuana products. And so if the products are nicotine products, then they would be permissible under your code. And the second thought that I had as well is, i- if you had some sort of definition in your code that said something to the effect of a convenience store is only considered a convenience store, if it does not sell more than fifty percent nicotine products or something like that, then we would have something to ding them on. But I don't believe that there is such a definition in your code. I, I don't, I don't know. But Chief, have you, have you seen anything that's?
No, actually. And I was speaking with Elise yesterday about the same information. We're kinda stuck. We can't make any ordinances or codes that are any more restrictive than what the state allows. We can't change it until twenty-twenty-seven. So it's not like we can go in right now and say, okay, if you're selling more than forty percent of your items are smoke related, it's no good. We can't do that. That's more restrictive than what, what currently is allowed and we are at a pause until twenty-twenty-seven.
What do we have after twenty-twenty-seven?
Then, then the, the state bill is allowing us to then make changes or look at, visit, making changes to existing ordinances. But we cannot get them more restrictive now. Then it would look like we're targeting. We see a business come in that we don't like what, that they fit under the law and now we come in and go, nope, we're gonna change the law.
Right. And I just wanted.
I'm sorry, I didn't mean to cut you off. Our ordinance is very well written against cannabis dispensaries. This does not fit the, the bill of a cannabis dispensary.
What if they were selling paraphernalia? That was.
I can tell you, that's an easy go around. All the paraphernalia just says, all of these items must be tobacco use only. And that's what you see everywhere. I can't control what somebody buys and goes home and puts in that pipe or whatever. It's, it's, you know, they just put tobacco use only. That's how they.
So how do we get ahead, Stephanie, before any other vacant building shows up and there's lights around the windows?
The protections that you have currently built into your code do meaningfully guard against a, a full-on vape shop. You know, the thing that you think of, you're driving by at night and it's all lit up.
A neon sign.
Right, right. That is, is not permissible under, under your code. Is that, that's correct, Chief. And so what we're really looking at is, is sort of a, a partial use, if you will, right? Selling some products as, as part of a greater use that is, is not strictly limited to these nicotine products.
So let me stop you right there, right now. Real quick. If you go and you find out that a gross, the majority of their sales is on the vape versus on the convenience side, is that grounds to say, hey, you're not?
It would have to be defined. I mean, we would have, there would have to be a, a clear definition. And I, I think one of the things that we had conversation yesterday, we're very well written to prevent a vape shop from coming in, building a structure and building. But we never allowed for the possibility that a business would go out of business and change and transition. And that's, that's, I think, the.
Well, and that's what I was.
Right. That they, they fell into here.
That's what I was just wondering, cause we do have a lot, you know, we've got the office complex, condo complex that's currently, you know, under a construction behind racetrack, which I know when I was on planning and zoning, you know, we talked about what can't go in there and, you know, hopefully it will be medical offices and things like that, but we can't, you know, we can only restrict it to so much, but we did call out those things. And I know with all of our new development agreements, we have done that. But to the chief's point and Stephanie is, you know, when a place flips over, how do we? I mean, obviously through permitting and stuff like that, they wouldn't be permitted to do something like that. But how do we do that? I'm also wondering with this particular situation we're talking about, they're also using the car wash as, I think, a fruit and vegetable stand. I've heard. I, I've driven by, I wasn't really sure what was going on in the car wash, but it wasn't washing cars. I mean, you know, how do we, and my concern is that that corner becoming an eyesore or attracting a certain element. I mean, obviously I know PD will be on top of that, but, you know, just kinda managing that property. But, you know, do we create it? Is there an ordinance or something we can do to just protect the town? Because my concern was be, you know, we've seen it in parts of all kinds of cities where one place turns into something undesirable and then the next place turns, you know, and you kinda get a, a row of it or something. That how do we protect ourselves in that way and, and can we? And, and then like if that corner becomes an eyesore, I guess code enforcement would be able to stay on top of that part of it. But, you know.
What's to present, what's to prevent the BP gas station from turning half of theirs into.
Yeah.
Doing the same thing.
So if I may, I'd like to read some language directly out of SB one eighty. So that, that is the law that the chief has been alluding to and that I referenced earlier. Section twenty-eight of SB one eighty reads, "Each county listed in the federal disaster declaration for Hurricane Debbie, Hurricane Helene or Hurricane Milton and each municipality within one of those counties, and these, this list includes Orange County and Oakland, may not propose or adopt any moratorium on construction, reconstruction or redevelopment of any property damaged by such hurricanes, propose or adopt more restrictive or burdensome amendments to its comprehensive plan or land development regulations, or propose or adopt more restrictive or burdensome procedures concerning review, approval or issuance of a site plan, development permit or development order." And that is in effect until twenty-twenty-seven with a retroactive effect dating back to August first, twenty-twenty-four.
Your opinion that, when I, when I think about it, I'm thinking about it as a, the overall property building, use, development of that property. I don't know if that includes the actual use of the property. Is that correct? I mean, if I'm going from Ed's sub shop to a vape shop.
The language is very broad. It, what is not allowed is to propose or adopt more restrictive or burdensome amendments to its comprehensive plan or land development regulations. And so it's not tied to use or construction or any specific activity. It is, the question is simply, does this impose an additional burden?
So with what you're saying, with what that says, we can't set that, we can't go to, we can't adopt any type of regulation or code ordinance in the town as a whole that says, no smoke shops, no vape shops.
I would advise against doing so until this bill expires in twenty-twenty-seven.
So between twenty-twenty-five and twenty-two years, I mean, you could have them pop. And then what do you do? You're stuck, right? You can't get them out.
Well, you've got the protections that are currently built into your code and so you can certainly enforce those. You just can't adopt something that would be more restrictive. And, and so something that would be more restrictive would be adding something in that says, you know, you, if you're a convenience store, you cannot sell twenty-five percent or more nicotine products or something to that effect. That would be more restrictive because you're, you're taking away something that folks are currently permitted to do.
What is the language about with regard to the hurricane redevelopment? I mean, this is an existing property. That's where I'm confused because why does it say? I mean, to me, when you write it, it sounds like things related to, like if you lived in Fort Myers that was decimated and you were rebuilding something versus a, a property that has just literally changed business again.
So it's a long list of things that are not allowed. One thing that is not allowed is that, that language that you're honing in on related to redevelopment of hurricane damaged properties. The second thing on the list is this very broad language that really has nothing to do with hurricanes. It is simply propose or adopt more restrictive or burdensome amendments to its comprehensive plan or LDRs.
Until twenty-twenty-seven?
Yes, until October first, twenty-twenty-seven.
As, as a fallback, Stephanie, correct me if I'm wrong, should this, like worst case scenario, become undesirable street corner, crime ridden or crime infested, whatever, now we have the option for nuisance abatement. There is, there always is an avenue to address it. So we, we can address that. If it were to happen, not to say that I would ever want that to happen, but nuisance abatement is there as a tool to address the undesirable corners, the crime infested areas, things like that. We just have to stay on top of that. Through our code enforcement, that's exactly what we would do.
Yes. Any criminal conduct, any nuisance and, and any conduct that is already not permissible under your code, those are certainly things that code enforcement and the police department can enforce. So, you know, your, your existing protections that you have, which are, are great, those don't poof into thin air. You, you still have them.
I got a question on the business itself. Is it under the umbrella of Citco or is it an independent, separate business?
As far as I understand, it is one business under the name of the, the convenience store.
Can we look into that to find out if it's a different business?
It, it has a different business name, yes.
Okay, so under a different business name, on some business, it has a different name, should not have already pulled a permit for that space?
They, they do have an alcohol and nicotine tobacco license.
The new business?
The new business does, by this, issued by the state.
Okay, so the new business has actually pulled a permit to add, say, going back to Ed, putting a sub shop inside a store? Because it's not under the same umbrella as Citco.
The existing business had the same licensing.
Correct.
That the new business does.
The new business does or does not?
Does.
Okay, the new business had to pull a permit to modify it to sell from there, did they not?
They did not because they did not change the use. It's the same use that seven eleven had in the space.
If that, if that business were, if, if that business were in there, let's say there's one owner and there's, and that business, and that's a convenience store, but then that business came in and said, I wanna sublease a part of your store from you. I'm a different business, a different LLC. They would then have to come in, right, and get a business tax receipt or business tax license for that use? Am I making sense?
Yes, but they're not. So, so for example, let, let me use an example. So turn two, for example, has one type of business tax receipt. If a physical therapist were to come into that business, which they have, right, a physical therapist, a strength training coach, they have to get their own business tax receipt for the separate use. So it's no different. But this one, I'm telling you, did not change use, period. It changed ownership.
Use is a question, I, I think. If it, I own this gas station or whatever it is.
Let's use VP as an example.
Yeah, we used a VP when DG Donuts went in there. That was a separate business that they had to do it all themselves. These people, they don't have a separate business all themselves. It's all one thing that we don't know of.
Correct. That's what I wanna know. If it's a separate business, then we have a loophole that we can jump in through. I'm just looking for something, right? A separate business going to VP saying, I'm gonna sell paraphernalia or whatever. It's totally different. Or selling vegetables from a car wash. It's a different business.
I mean, based on that new, that ordinance you wrote, I think that's ordinance just adopted in July first, right?
It, it is a state statute, but yes.
July, I'm sorry. I say ordinance, state statute, sorry. July first. But with. Stuck.
This is another one of them.
Well, and, and just to be clear, we're as concerned as you when we're continuing as a team to monitor it, look into it, see if there's anything we can do. Right now, there's nothing that we have found that we can do.
I guess if that particular business offends you, don't frequent the business.
Correct.
At this time.
Technically, to Chief's point, it's a, it's still a convenience store. They're just having a higher percentage of undesirable things to some people and not to others. And there's just not grounds for us to do that. But I think Chief seems to be on top of. But I think chief seems to be on top of it with code enforcement and the PD monitoring. I think that's the best we can hope for at this point is that they just stay on top of it and monitor it. And obviously if, you know, we don't want it to get to a place that it'd be a problem. But if it does, guys will be keenly aware of that. Yeah.
And the answer to your other question, I believe I'm hearing without it hadn't been said, is it doesn't matter what percentage is what?
We don't have that established. We can't change it.
And at this point in time, until two years, hopefully they don't renew, is that you, we, we couldn't pass an ordinance saying smoke shops, vape shops aren't allowed in the town?
Unfortunately, the only thing really that is allowed under the state statute as it currently stands is to give people more rights and more ability to do things, not to restrict them further. And and so that would, would not be allowed.
Even new stuff? I mean, that, that ordinance is under existing, correct? Is that under existing? I'm not, the state statute. Is that under existing development? Like if somebody's rebuilding during the hurricanes or is, it doesn't matter?
Are you asking would this state statute apply in, in the case that?
Somebody, yeah, if somebody came in and said, I'm, I'm going to build a freestanding vape shop at the corner of Fourth and 50.
If it's not permissible under your code currently, which I don't believe that it would be.
It's not. So that's, how do we get it so it is not a permissible use under the land development code?
It already is, is not.
It's just not in every, yeah.
Huh?
So.
Long one, it's already there.
That's what we were talking about is we, we were very prepared for a new business, but we didn't even address the issue of a.
New business being a smoke shop.
I'm saying that a smoke shop can't come in and build their own business. We never looked at, or it appears that it was never.
Partial.
That an existing business shuts their doors and somebody else comes in and sells those items.
And again, that's very convenience store. That's their life.
Correct.
Yes.
Anything illegal under our current code.
If they came in and took out all of the convenience store stuff in the dead of night and filled it with smoke shop paraphernalia and put the crazy lights everywhere and all of that, we could absolutely take action against, yes.
That is correct. If they removed all the soda machines tonight and the freezers and all that stuff, then now, now, and they're functioning as a smoke shop. They're identifying.
They're not selling gas no more.
Would cease to be a convenience store.
They're selling, they're a convenience store that also sells smoke.
If they're very successful by next week, now we have to wait for two years.
And it's like, you know, voting, in this case, it's putting your business where, you know, if it's something that we don't want to support in our town, don't get your gas there, go to Racetrack or BP or somewhere else.
Probably the reason why they're doing that is because nobody's going there. Oh, okay. Thanks for that. We'll keep an eye on it.
And I'm, I'm, I just want to echo what Elise said. I also am not a fan of SB 180. And I'm sorry that this is the situation that the town is in. It is something that municipalities across the state are grappling with right now and and trying to figure out the best way to address new issues that are popping up with these restrictions in place and.
Well, maybe speaking for the whole board and we don't agree with it for the record. We're not happy with it for the record.
Yeah, I think Elise will bring something up a little bit later tonight about some other things that could happen. Okay, so we're going to move on to the public forum. This is a chance for anybody in the audience that'd like to speak on any issue that's not on. So when we come up, when I come up, you know, limited to three minutes and we'll go from there. Any takers? Scott?
Good evening. I want to first say everything I do here, everything that I brought to the community. You guys talk about having to hear from us as residents and I bring things up to make our community better and to let you know what's going on. So about a month ago, I brought in this video showing a dump truck headed down Arrington, putting up a significant cloud of dust behind it. These are the new millings on our streets in our neighborhood. This whole issue is also surrounding to the petition that I started in our neighborhood because the paving is going on in my community. I found trash on the previous roads. I found metal debris on the previous roads. When I brought this video in, nobody really was interested in it. Nobody asked me about it. Nobody even wanted to see it. I wanted to put it up on the big screen and I asked, but I couldn't do that. So I want to let you know I brought this here first. So I didn't feel that there was interest in it. That comes down to maybe what I talked about, about indifference. So the next day I posted on social media so everybody could see, along with the debris that was found on the roads. So I was accused by the mayor in an email of putting up false imagery on Facebook over this video. The mailings were completed on May 9th. This video was taken on May 21st. There's nothing done to alternate. It was posted on May 28th. I have neighbors that saw me taking these videos. I have neighbors that were upset about the dust coming from the new millings because the milling set, no dust. I was upset about what happened in front of our house. That was a different story. But part of that relates to the fact that there was a town employee that came to Edge Grove when the contractor was putting that material down. He measured the width of it, looked at the material and left. He didn't even know what the millings were supposed to look like. And the project continued. So the material that's on Arrington is extremely dusty. So you had the counter comments, you said, about my video because you didn't even believe this was the new millings on this road. And I'd be happy to show you. There are artifacts in the video that can be seen on the road where the truck stopped. This is the new millings, a week after it stopped raining. Today, when I was out, I saw one of the town trucks go by on Vic. It's only rained, it stopped raining a couple of days ago. They're kicking up dust. I don't know that these millings are the answer to what's going on in our community. I'm glad you guys are talking about connecting trails and connecting our communities. We're never going to have sidewalks. And one of the things they talked about, paving our roads would actually give us more access.
Scott, if that video, like you say, is, is that, when I looked at the video and it was shared to me, like again, I am not on social media. I don't believe that an issue like this should be shared on social media. This, this needs to take place in a forum like this. That's my opinion. I don't know about anybody else or anything. So, but I will tell you that when posts like that are made, town staff does share that with me. They, they, they do. And, and, and friends and neighbors and all that stuff say, did you see this? When I looked at the video, to me, it did not look like the road was complete yet when you took the photo. But if you say, if you're saying, hey, I took the, I took the video after the road was complete on May, May the 27th?
May 21st.
My, my, my fault, you know? Mike, I know that we're contracted with another contractor. The town has acknowledged that what has been put down is not satisfactory. And we're in the process of hiring a new contractor to do that. Mike?
Yeah, we have a, we have a new contractor on board. I sent out a notice to all the residents that it would be beginning the week of, of July 7. The contractors ran into a few delays. He's getting a crew together. I just talked to him today. He's getting a crew together to get started. But it'll be, it'll be a much better product than what was originally down.
I agree with the mayor that that road did not look complete. And those trucks have air hydraulics that shoot out at a very high PSI pressure. So that is not a good representation of a regular vehicle. Just in my opinion, looking at the video, because I'm not jumping on all social media myself, but it didn't look like it was complete from the color of it.
That's one of my points, though. That is the color of the millings. You can, you can say you don't believe it all you want, but that video has not been edited and that video was not before the millings are down. That's what's out there. And that's what, that's what led me to the petition. So I have finished the petition. I'd like to turn it in tonight.
The, the video was taken at Arrington in Vic, is that correct?
I was on Vic, looking down Arrington. One of the residents was, saw me that day taking these videos. The garbage truck is the easiest one to see. There's a, I have in the emails I sent you guys, if you stop that tape at 13 seconds, right in front of that garbage truck, you can see a light gray surface. And then there's a mixed colored surface. That exists today on Arrington because the materials the contractor brought varied as they went down.
Mike, is that the stuff that's being pulled up? Or I don't know where we're at, I was out of town.
Yeah, so we pulled up, I think, 2,100 linear feet, I believe. Arrington was not one of the streets that it was removed on. It was deemed by three different engineering firms to be acceptable. And I just pulled up what was unacceptable.
So has there been any, what is your video taken on, on Vic running through?
Yes.
Because I, I can say, when I see cars and traffic going down Petrus or going down Hall and, and I, I don't see it. Now, that's on Vic.
That's Vic headed towards Star.
Not a standard car.
That's what I mean.
When this video repeats, that's a pickup truck at the end of Vic. If you come up and see the video is close, I'd love to spend at least five minutes showing you these things.
This is.
We're seeing dust. I was working on my windows on my house and I'd hear a car go by, turn around and I'd look and there're clouds of dust coming up from it.
That's, that's on your street because it's not complete yet, right?
No, Vic, I see the cars on Vic. I'm not talking about mine. The, the bad material that we had on Vic was actually extremely low dust because it was rock.
It was?
Yes. There was no powder on it.
Well, that was the reason why we changed it out because I remember John coming in saying, this is absolutely crazy. I can't wash my car, truck, I can't do anything. And it was because of the material that we put down. And it was the material we used from Windermere.
Yeah.
It went through there and it created a lot worse dust.
Oh, I'm not talking, I'm talking the milling project that was just put in, the bad stuff that was removed from Edge Grove. That was extremely low dust, but it was, it was big rocks. It was big pieces of, of pavement and limestone.
On the old material before we took it up?
The most recent that was put down and yes, the material that was just taken up.
But if you're going from Star down Vic to Tub Street, that material put down?
That's what I have in the video. That material is still there. That hasn't changed.
So what you're proposing, what you would like is a, a full pavement road?
Well, I, all I wanted to do was pose, poll the residents in Oakland Shores. And I've been around to most of them. I've talked to 54 people and I've been to 34 of the 43 homes. Some people are just not home. And whether I run the numbers by people or by homes, I get 80% of the residents want paved street. These are old residents. They've been here 15 and 20 years and they're tired of the dust. They're tired of the loose materials. This, I, I pounded the pavement and knocked on doors and talked to everybody. The pandemic didn't let me meet my neighbors. I've been here almost six years.
So how do you, how do you propose the town fund that project?
I believe seeing as we're a cut through neighborhood from Oakland Shores that our traffic has increased tremendously, that impact fee should be able to be used to change these roads and improve the roads.
And down Mather Smith and Edge Grove as well?
Yeah.
But it's not a cut through, you're saying Vic's the cut through.
Well, Vic's a cut through and they're either going to go down Edge Grove to get to our intersection here or they're going to continue up to Mather Smith. Or I should say Arrington to come to, come into the town. We're a main connector. Our neighborhood is a funnel for people coming from that new development. I think it's real easy to justify paving.
I would say they come, they, they come to Tub Street, sorry to interrupt, but not, not over here. Are we complete, Mike? With the resurfacing of that material already, the company or not?
Well, we're, he's in the middle of it right now.
Okay, so if we're not complete, I could tell you that on Hall Avenue, it does not kick up dust.
I don't see no Petrus. And, and I'm starting to, and I, and I.
But those are different materials.
Well.
Well, we're going to put the correct material, are we not, Mike?
But there is no correct material.
It's the same material on Hall Avenue and Petrus.
It can never be the same. It was one of the reasons I brought in. I have all of my documents from asphalt companies. They say one of the cons of this material is the variable quality. It's based on what was ground up and the roads it was picked up from and brought to the facilities. It's not processed.
Mike? It's your turn.
To ask the question.
The question is, is the material going to be replaced, the same one that we have on Petrus and Hall?
No, you won't get the same material. It'll, it'll vary. It will vary.
Will it vary for better?
Will it what?
Will it be better?
It'll be, the material that's going down will be much better than what was removed.
Will it be equal to the one on Petrus and Hall Avenue or better than that?
I, I can't answer that. We won't know till it goes down because it's, like he said, it's variable. It, it could be, it could be better. I think it will be equal. It came from a different road that was milled and, you know, it's variable.
I'm, I'm going to say that, go ahead.
I'm going to say that I have said this in the very. Thank you. And I've said this in the very beginning, that no road that is not paved is going to be completely dust free. It's just, that's just a matter of fact. There is a little bit that goes on Hall. There is a little bit that goes on, on Petrus, not enough to make a difference because people want to live on the dirt roads. People bought on dirt roads to start with. It has gotten worse. It is our job to mitigate that and make it better. I get that. Holding up.
This is from the town commission meeting, March 11th. The material that was approved were asphalt millings number two. One of the last descriptions of it were minor maintenance and no dust.
Again, I will still hold that there is nothing that isn't going to be pure asphalt. It's going to be 100% dust free.
I think, you know, I think if you look real close, maybe an asphalt road throws up a lot of, throws up, not a lot, but throws up dust as well.
Anyway, the videos are materials that are not being taken up that are in Oakland Shores. I'm not talking about the materials that have been removed and are going to be replaced. That's the problem with the millings is you don't know what you're going to get. The, the facilities take these millings that are ground up. They put them through processors, add asphalt and binders and put them down as hot asphalt mix. That's how it's used.
We're about to find out, Scott, because they could be the same as Hall and Petrus or better.
And Hall and Petrus were littered with colored debris from basketball courts, tennis courts, whatever it was. It looks like there's garbage all over the roads. And the one problem that I see with those roads is all of the loose rock are spreading over to the edges of the roads. There's huge piles of loose material from those roads.
Again, Scott, let us finish the project. It was done wrong and we are all admitting to that. It was, it really was a horrible job.
I understand.
Let us get finished and see what that product does.
I, I don't know if you'll, I think when the product's done, you, you would still come for us and say, I still want asphalt roads.
80% of the people in my neighborhood want asphalt roads.
So why can't they come to the meetings and say, I want asphalt roads?
Well, I can bring them to the meetings. There's a lot of them have gotten behind me on this, starting with the petition. 80% by houses and 80% by people polled.
So.
I, I only did this to get a feel of where it was at because everybody's talked about Oaklanders don't want, they like the dirt roads. They like the, you know, the old feel. Here, here's the caveat to this. And a lot of people, there were some in here, three of them are support, they like what they got. They're also on corners that got really good material and they don't have, their dust there is minimal. They have said if the dust increases, they would support paving, although they don't want to. My whole point of this, and I really appreciate you giving me the extra time, is that the project that was done on West Gully, I think, was a missed opportunity. This project had very good specifications for the material that was put down. The road was primed, material had binders in it and the road had a top coat.
Where was it? I'm sorry, what?
This is on West Gully. This is the project completed, I think, in September of 24.
West Gully. Daniels and Walker?
Yep.
Yeah. Oh, oh, yeah, that was the first trial of basically getting asphalt.
Those are.
Millings, whereas that, that was not, in my opinion, a. Millings, whereas that, that was not, in my opinion, a successful venture because of the, and this is where we were trying out different methods. It, it's, it's in between. Yeah. Just how it came out and how the contractor put it down. It was, and it's too thick. It didn't go down right for that. So I know, okay, now I understand where you're.
But that's because they put it down with skid steers. If the binders and materials.
Correct.
Put down with an asphalt machine like we did these, I think we would have a beautiful road.
You're 100% correct. And that was correct. That was put down with a skid steer and a roller. What we said was it's the same type of material. We're going to put it down with a, with a asphalt machine. That will then put it, place it down like what you see now, that's happening now, along with behind it is a roller that compacts it down.
Correct.
Even more. So that was the same thing. It's just, it was, it was what? Six inches thick and it was just rolled back and forth, back and forth, back and forth.
You could probably put far less, but the one key to that road is that road is dust free. There is no dust.
It is because what was put on there, as much was put on there and as much was packed down, it's almost asphalt.
Disagree. It's not dust free, Scott. And you can see and videotape a dump, the, the pro waste management go by there because there's already dirt over it. So go ahead and bring the video there.
But that was caused by the town scraping the road to make it smooth. All the debris from that scraping is what made it dusty. If you go to the two intersections where nothing was done, if the material was clean, that would be a very.
That, that, that test subject was not a success in our opinion, not what we were looking for. And then we tried the Hall Avenue was the first one and then we did Petrus and that is exactly what we're looking for. And again, unfortunately, the contractor came in and put some inferior material down in, in Oakland Shores. You know, I, I understand everybody would like to have a paved road, but impact fees can't pay for everybody's paved road. Unfortunately, I don't know if there's a case or a study that can be done to determine, can Vic Street qualify for an impact fee? I don't believe Edge Grove. I don't believe Mather Smith would qualify for an impact fee.
But how can we use impact fees to put down this material?
We're not using impact fees for that material.
Oakland Shore is not being paid for by impact fees?
No.
Okay. So the half a million that's.
Is that correct, Gabby? Oakland Shores is not being used, impact fees is not being used to pay the contractor for the materials?
Currently, no.
Okay. The shell material was put down with impact fees.
Don't think so.
If, if I may add to the conversation, as you alluded to earlier, Mayor, I would recommend, I would recommend that a study be done by a consultant to demonstrate that there is actually the need being generated by new development as opposed to simply a change in behavior of the existing residents. This is a concern of mine because the, the fact has been brought up that everybody's ordering Amazon now. Everybody's ordering, you know, grocery delivery, et cetera. If it is the current residents in the older neighborhood that are making those orders and generating that dust with their own traffic, then that's not related to new development. That's simply a change in behavior of the people who live there. I will also say there is another funding option on the table. It is called a special assessment and the cost of this would be added on to the tax rolls only of the individuals who live on the streets to be paved.
That'd be like a development district?
CRA, I guess CRA or whatever.
Um, perhaps similar, yes.
So that would be a non ad valorem add to their tax roll?
Yes, a special assessment.
For the homeowners in that area.
Yeah. We've had residents that have offered to pay more on their taxes to get the roads paved. There's a resident at the end of the street who's offered to pay to pave his section himself.
Mm-hmm.
And I have the invoice from the shell material and it circled that transportation impact fees were used to pay for that.
When was that?
Uh, the date on this one was 5/20 of 24. And this is for Edge Grove and East Vic Avenue.
Okay.
What's the vendor?
Maybe that's where we start.
Maybe that's what we do. We look at the initial costs and do, and see what special assessments be done.
And those would be the questions for your neighborhood. Would you be willing on your taxes to pay more to get it paved and we go from there?
Well, one of the things I did ask at the last meeting a month ago was to form a committee so residents actually have some input on the materials that are going to be put down on the road.
I would love to have those residents come to this forum, just like we're doing now and have them talk and discuss and say, this is what we'd like to have. This is what we'd like to have. No different than, you know, John coming and, and, and talking about it. No different than other residents coming in and saying, this dust problem, this is a problem. I, 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 I've talked to John. I think Mike's talked to John. The guy said, it's working great for me.
Okay, that's one resident. I've got 44 here that say it's not.
Well then, know what? And I think you should submit those to the town clerk.
I am.
And have the town clerk verify the addresses and everybody. And I would love to have those people, please come to this forum. This is the, this is the forum to do that. The forum's not, it's not, it's not a, I saw this or I talked to this person or I did this person. It's, it's, it's a, it's, this is where, we have more chairs we could put out too, if more people come. I'd love to hear it. I really would. And I think I told you that after one meeting, bring the people.
I did, but that's the whole reason for a petition because not everybody can get to the meeting.
Right. But we have these meetings at seven o'clock and until it's almost nine o'clock. I'm sure they could probably show up late knowing that, hey, this is where it's going to be at on the agenda. Again, I would encourage if anybody's out there listening and doing this, that please just come and, and talk to us and tell us.
And I want you to go to social media, gather, you know, live cities' opinions.
Yeah, but when I bring you a video and nobody wants to see it and I didn't even get, I get less than three minutes to talk about it.
Well, and you're making some assumptions there. You know, again, you know, the town monitors things, love us to see things. We don't respond on social media because that's just not the appropriate forum.
I don't expect.
Um, but you're making assumptions that we don't talk to Elise. You know, obviously we can't have conversations amongst ourselves without the public forum, but we can talk to Elise. We can talk to Public Works. We can talk, engage Stephanie. So just because we don't respond on social media or we didn't happen to be able to watch your whole video here doesn't mean that we haven't seen it and we're not addressing it and trying to take, take care of things behind the scenes.
Yeah. And I don't think that none of us up here don't care. We're not just dismissing it as an issue. I mean, like I said in my, in my email to you. Since I've been sitting here, we've done more for dirt roads. In the year and two months, three months I've been sitting here trying to address road problems of what's going on. We, we, we wholeheartedly admit there's, there's a dust issue out there. There's road issues out there. How can we do it? But here's how we're trying to do it. We're trying to find solutions that will fit into our budget. That's the problem. We don't have the money to go through and say, everybody's road gets paved. How we look at it, and I'll just share a little bit what we're trying to do. We're trying to work with developers that are coming in and saying, hey, you know, maybe we can work something out where you can help since you're going to be impacting this, you can help pave some of these roads and stuff like that. Um, you know, so, so it's to sit there and say, well, we, we just, we're not looking at it. We're not paying. No, I mean, we are. We hear it. We, we, we see it. We, we know it. I, I, I lived right behind there. I drive my truck down there. I drive my golf cart through there. I don't, I mean, I drove through and I looked to see if I'm kicking up dust.
And I drive, I have driven through there regularly, monitoring the progress of the millings that were put down, the ones that were removed. Again, I think, you know, assuming that we don't care or that we're not working on solutions is, is not appropriate. We, we all are concerned about this. To the mayor's point, if you were at the budget meeting, I'm not sure if you were. We have a very tight budget. We're trying, you know, one of the things that as a resident before I was on the commission, um, you know, you, you have to acknowledge that everybody wants, you know, what they want, but we are trying to not raise taxes on our residents. We are holding our millage rate down. We are going with, you know, the police department would like an extra officer. You know, we have to look at being fiscally responsible with everyone in the town's money and address these things as we can. So, you know, while this is your, you and your neighborhood's concern, we are not dismissing that. But we can't just say, oh, great, no problem. We'll just pave all of Oakland Shores. Because then that's going to mean we don't have money for a water tank that's critical to the town. There's, you know, we have to look at everything. So just, you know, please be mindful that it is not us being dismissive. It is us trying to balance the needs of the whole entire town and the budget that we have.
By the time the project here and the shell project is done, you'll have spent over 50% of the cost to pave Oakland Shores. And I never said that anybody doesn't care. Um, a month ago, when I approached you guys, that was the shortest meeting I've ever seen. I tried to get to you. I tried to get to three people to show the videos and actually to show the debris from the first road because I wanted to talk about how variable this, these millings can be. I don't want trash on our roads in Oakland. That's why I'm doing this. That's why I was asking for a pause to this before, if there's some way to figure out whether we can get consistent millings, which I don't know if we can.
We're about to find out.
Well.
Again, we, we got residents on Hall Avenue and Petrus who have not came over here to complain. They, they are jumping for joy of the limit of the dust they used to experience versus now. So yes, it's 50%, but if it was 100%, that means other streets that we have in our plan to do will not get done. So we have to be considerate for the other streets who are also here to say, could you at least give me what they have over there? We're not done yet, Scott. Let us finish.
I'm aware. It's going to be fingers crossed to see what goes down in front of my house. That's the thing. I don't know what I'm getting at. And you know, I'll be back.
Yeah, right. And I appreciate that. And I, I sent my email to you. I appreciate your app. I do. I think this is great that you're doing this. Um, you know, in anything that we talk about, this isn't a personal issue. It's particularly, this is all business. I mean, it's, we have to, like, like they said, we have to look at a whole town. You can't just look at this little section here. But what I like to say is, if you guys are okay with it, I'd like to have, ask Stephanie to go ahead and explore that option of the special exception. And see what material may bring that back at the next meeting and let us know what we have to do.
Would you like for me to bring sort of a short explanation of just how it would work procedurally?
I think so. Just so we, we have that and we know what we're needing to do. And I think, Mike, you probably have the linear footage on that. I'm sure you could probably get a quick, an estimate from a reputable contractor.
Yeah, I'll reach out to the consultants and see if we can get, get something there.
Great.
And Scott, you get as many of your folks here as you can. That, that, that's your assignment if you choose to accept it.
Oh, I'm aware. He just.
Seriously. And, and you know.
When it's going to be so I can get the word out.
Two weeks. Is that what we're saying?
Oh, well, I'd like to have.
Can we come back with something in a couple of weeks and then Mike maybe can get an.
Oh, I apologize.
Oh, you know, if that's the, if that's what the, the residents of that area want to do. I mean, I'd like to have Stephanie at least give us the procedure of how, how this, how that process goes down, you know, how, what that's like. And then if Mike can kind of, you know, I know you said you had an estimate. Uh, Mike can, on town's behalf, really get a real true estimate on what has to be done. I mean, everything from, hey, we just come in, put hot millings on there? Do we have to grade this down with the engineer? Do we have to do what type thing? Yeah. Okay.
Okay. The only thing I would wonder is why you would assume I would post a false video. I'm here at meetings. Why would I ruin my reputation putting up something?
Again, when I looked at the video.
No, I know.
And, and look, the email between was just, it was directed to you. I didn't post it to everybody. I didn't send it to anybody.
No, that's.
Just to you. But when I looked at the video and I saw the edge of the road and I saw, I said, I don't think they're done with the road. I don't, I don't know if he's posting a, a video that, that really shows what the finished product looks like. I didn't have a stamp date on it. There was not a stamp date on the video. Now, if you're saying that, hey, the stamp date on that was May the 21st of 2025? Okay, it is. And if that is the case and that's what's happening, all right. My, my bad.
That wasn't a question. It was why would you assume that I would post a false video?
Because it's been done before.
I know it's been done before.
Right.
Well, regardless, let's move forward and try to get it worked out right. Many of your folks as you can get here, please, please.
I appreciate your time for this evening. Thank you.
Your three minutes are up.
Thank you. All right. So let's go on. Let's try to finish this up. Uh, town managers and report, what are we doing, Elise?
Doing good. Just a couple of quick updates. If you haven't seen the manager's report, Oakland General vacated the concession area. We're working with somebody else. Hopefully they will be up and running in the near future. So stay posted for that. Oakland Avenue Charter School retained their A rating for this year. So super exciting. Great job to all the school employees. Um, that is definitely a team effort to be able to retain that grade. So we want to recognize all of them. Um, the last thing, we've been talking about Senate Bill 180. So like we've had to put the tree ordinance on hold because that is more restrictive than what's in our current code. So we won't be able to revisit a revised tree ordinance until probably after 2027. But one of the other things that the, if you've been paying attention to what's happening at the legislative level was the discussion of property taxes reductions, right? That discussion is not over. They've convened a select committee on property taxes. So Mayor Taylor and I went up and met with leaders from Apopka, Coe, Winter Garden, Windermere and ourselves with Representative Banksen, who serves on the select committee on property taxes. And they have this full plan about how they can get rid of all the homestead. Add, get rid of all the property taxes for those that are homestead over the next 10 years, but they don't have um, a really solid replacement plan in place. They're talking about grants. They're talking about different things. Um, so I think every single jurisdiction was emphasizing that without a reliable replacement revenue source, that this would be devastating to our budgets. So I just kind of want to tell you some numbers. Um, so our budget is about 10 million for this year. 58% of that, so almost $6 million comes from ad valorem property taxes. Of that amount, approximately 74% or about 4.3 million is generated from residential properties. Homesteaded properties are more than half the total taxable value in town. So those are huge numbers. So I just want to bring up, I'm sorry, chief, but between the police department and Orange County Fire Services, that amount is about $5 million between just those two areas. The elimination of homestead property taxes would impact our ability to provide essential services. So I just want everybody to be keeping an eye on it. If you have a chance to talk to your legislature, legislators emphasize that getting rid of homestead property taxes is not the answer for jurisdictions. Um, and, and I think all of West Orange County is on that same page.
So Elise and I are setting up a, a meeting with our local representative to go and talk to him. We know that Rep Banksen sits on that select committee. So it is, it is discerning that, you know, there's really not a, there's source of revenue coming in. I mean, if you got rid of all property taxes, which, you know, as a property owner, you're probably saying, yeah, why, why am I keep paying this? But um, you might want to get that special assessment language together because if that goes away and, and I think it's like a, it's like a 10-year cycle or something. I think it's what they're looking at. Over the next 10 years starts stripping away.
Is there plant beef or replacement?
So, so I, I grabbed some stuff. They threw some things out that they had. And I brought them with me, but some of the, some of the things could be putting, having people put a license plate on front of their car. Maybe generate some, some, some revenue from that. Another one was charging a fee for each person that goes to a cruise, comes to the ports, you'll get a fee. I said, well, I don't see anything about airports. You think you'd make a lot of money if you put it on somebody's ticket? So there's, there's a lot of, I think there's a lot of working and, and Rep Banksen did say that there's a lot of, though, ironing out how it works, but it's, it's not something that can be, that can be done hastily, right? So here's a snowbird use fee, annual use fee applied to all the state owners of Florida property unless claimed Florida as their full-time residence. Project a 10-year revenue, $8 billion.
Well, whatever the case is and however they want to spin it, if we're short $2, $3 million, they need to replace that because it would make a lot of towns like us go belly up.
Well, you would make, you would go bankrupt. But the, um, the, 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 the thing I don't know, and, and Elise and I talked about this was, you know, you pass this and you collect all this additional, how does that trickle down? How do you know how much I need? How you know how much you need? So, um, one of the things that I was, I was glad that we brought up, uh, uh, on that meeting was the, um, you know, we pay an Orange County percentage on your, on your tax, or Orange County. It's like four percent or something like that. And, and I'm glad that everybody was in unison on that about trying to find a way to lower that. Because I'm not sure when the last time Orange County was out on, on site to raid a road or dig a ditch or anything. I mean, dog catching, maybe that's what their services are for. But I think everybody was in unison to, to, to figure out, is there a way that you could do that? Because you could take that, what you're paying to Orange County and bring it back to the local community level. So.
Well, and the interesting thing to me is, okay, we're going to get rid of property taxes and now we're going to charge fees for all these things. So you're just really, in essence, replacing one tax with another. They're calling it a fee. But, you know, what's the next step? We've, you know, we don't have state income tax. But do we all of a sudden at some point, if this doesn't work, have to have a state income tax? I mean, at some point, they're going to have to replace that revenue. So while, again, you know, this, the soundbite is, hey, we're going to get rid of property taxes, which sounds great. But again, it's not just our little town. It's, it's all towns and that will be impacted by the loss of that revenue. And it's going to have to come from somewhere. So the fact remains, you get rid of property tax, there's going to be new fees. There's going to be a new stream of income that you can call it fees, but it's really just other taxes and.
It would go to the ad, non-advalorem tax is what you do, just similar to what we just discussed here. So if we want the police department like we have it today and you want to make sure you're safe, you'll have a fee per person.
Right.
Per resident every year that will be owed based on whatever, you know, so.
Let's pay for it one way or pay for it another. And so it's, it's just a, in my opinion, a politically exciting soundbite. We're going to get rid of property taxes.
So Representative Spencer will be at our next meeting to provide a legislative update. Um, it'll be interesting to hear what, what his take on this is.
Yeah.
Well, and my last two cents on that would be if you see the, the negativity of this and the impact on our town, call your legislatures and let them know how you feel. Just like showing up here and sharing with us your concerns and having us address them. It, there's a lot to be said if, if the legislatures get letters from people or emails from people or phone calls from people. They have to log all of those calls and all those concerns that are, and if they, you know, they're elected officials again. So if they hear something's not popular and it might impact them being reelected, these are how we use our voices to get them to notice that we don't think this is a good idea.
So if I'm not mistaken, this is the same conversation I brought to our board on June tenth meeting. I mentioned the same thing that, I mean, about a month ago, I even emailed Gabby and Elise to put together the dollar amount of how that affects us and how much police and fire, um, was costing us compared to this. Florida League of Cities, uh, as I mentioned when I was at a board meeting on June sixth, this was a one hour and a half topic. So the Florida League of Cities is asking all the cities and towns to send all that data. So when Gabby sent it to them, I already sent it to the Florida League of Cities. So they are collecting every city and town's, uh, budget as relates to avalorm and just police and fire. So most of the cities, even Tallahassee is like fifty percent, sixty percent. So that was the discussion that I brought up on, back on June, uh, June tenth meeting and from a meeting I was at on June sixth. So this is a big topic that I, that was already brought before us. And we've already a part of the data collection. Do the Florida League of Cities, because that's our biggest lobbying for, um, forum to talk to all of our legislators, not just the ones locally. In addition to that, uh, Florida League of Cities is putting together talking points to share with residents around the state, uh, to help combat this. And I've been asked to do some talks in, uh, the Mid-Area and in South Florida around this same topic. Uh, but the Florida League of Cities is putting, putting together talking points for all of us to help us, uh, uh, in this conversation. Some combat wars going on. So this is being discussed all over. Now, all over the, the Florida League of Cities, along with every city in, in, in the state and this big topic that I brought up a month ago. I just want to make sure that we understand.
You know, the thing with.
Thank everybody for this conversation tonight.
Yeah, no, absolutely. Um, and I do recall you talking about that back in June. But you know, the, the, the thing is, is you get it on the ballot and most people are going to be like, I'm saving money. They're not going to think about the consequences that would come with that. So education is the key. It would be the key for those people to understand.
And that's what the Florida Cities are doing. They're putting together all those talking points. And I've also sent Gabby and Elise some of the talking points that the legislator was talking about, some options. Which you're right, Commissioner Keller, it's fees. You're going to switch it over to fees. So there's no real solution. So this is not a one legislature that can help. This is going to be the body of all of us coming together to discuss this. And the Florida, Florida League of Cities are really trying to help us. And that's what happens at these conventions. You go, all the hot topics are really being driven and discussed so we can be prepared for that, what's going on, even impact fees. I got an email going out in the morning. It's going to ask Elise to call the Florida League of Cities for some guidance to help Stephanie and to help our town as relates to impact fees. Because impact fees was a big topic last year for the session. These things aren't just happening just to us. It's happening all the four hundred plus.
Commissioner, you think they're going to be bringing up these topics at the, the event?
Well, I know they are. Because the Florida, so you went to that, though. I missed the meeting, the meeting prior to that you missed. I was at a board meeting in June sixth and that, we spent an hour and a half just talking about, of course, there's several other issues going on. With the lead lobbyist, Casey Cook, he spent ninety minutes giving us a presentation just on property taxes.
Is everybody going to make it on the board to this?
To the county.
I'm making it. You guys, oh.
It'd be a topic.
It's going to be.
Thank you.
You are now.
You are now. You can't miss it. You're only voting delegate. But it'd be a topic.
Cool. Right. So, uh, anything else? You got anything on the?
Nothing really. I'm just hiring for education, for O and P. Um, a police officer, reserve officer, assistant public works director, and E U B clerk.
Still hiring. Yeah. We're hiring. Gabby?
I think I've spoken enough today. I'm good.
Okay, Mike, nothing?
I think I've got one, one topic, uh, of interest that I can, you know, unload on you all really quick. Um, back in October. Third one that we've put together, but we put one together. We got it to our legislators in, uh, Tallahassee. And it looks like it made it to the, uh, budget that was submitted to the governor. And Elise and I looked through the veto list. We don't see it anywhere in there. So keep your fingers crossed. Once we get our, um, acknowledgement from the state, um, it looks like we may have just landed a one point five million dollar, uh, septic sewer project.
Great. Congratulations. That's good.
Yeah.
Keep the champagne.
That's it.
Okay. Uh, I agree. Gabby has spoken enough. Okay. Mr. Keller.
I know where you live. I don't have anything to add.
Mr. McMuller?
Uh, nothing for me, but just want to add that, um, I mentioned before Adrian Cowens, our Adrian Cowens, or AC as I call him, is hosting just a pickup basketball game for the youth over at the park. And he wants all of us to come if possible. It's July twenty-sixth at six thirty.
Cool.
And now years ago, the kids, all the parks between Tildenville, Oakland, Winter Garden, um, and, and, um, Tildenville, yeah, Oakland, Winter Garden, and they would come together and do basketball games in different cities. Uh, they got away from that after COVID, around COVID, but this is something Adrian's going to bring back. You just want, you know, just want to get back to the youth. And this is for kids fifteen and older. July twenty-sixth, six thirty P M. Yeah. That's a.
Great. Mr. Ramos?
Just had a question on the update for the roundabout, Mike. Where we at with Acorn? Where we at with the final product anticipated?
Uh, the roundabout centerpiece, the center, yeah. So the masonry is all completed. Uh, we have, uh, installed the irrigation that will be used to get the, get the plant material established. And then it's Florida friendly, so, you know, we won't need irrigation in the future. Um, the Acorn has been, uh, completed, painted, almost ready to install. Uh, we've had a little situation with the mounting of it out there. So we went back and, uh, they're, they're actually welding up a piece that, uh, is necessary to keep it stable in that site. Um, I don't have a, an update on the installation date, but I've got like seven different people from the Oakland, or the, uh, Oakland Trails and, and places out there that are interested in, in being out there as soon as it gets up.
How about the letters?
The letters? Uh, I, I do not know when that'll happen. I've not seen the samples yet. But it is the, um, it is the Oakland.
Mm-hmm.
Oakland logo. It won't say Town of Oakland, but it will say Oakland.
Thank you. Well, I have. Great. Thanks. Good, 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 good follow-up. Uh, what I got is, uh, real quick, just a couple of town anniversaries. I know we got our packet. We get these, but these are some big ones here. These are, are, um, Oakland Avenue Charter School teachers and administrators. So, um, it's hard for me to believe, but Holly Hernandez has been here for eighteen years. Principal Dwyers, twelve years. Carlos Torres, who's the, um, maintenance guy, there's sixteen years. Donna Bailey, nineteen years. Um, Ms. Nysy, nineteen years in the lunchroom, and Ms. Janis, twenty years. So congratulations to those guys being around that long. It's, it's pretty good. And then again, if, if you haven't, last week, um, and I was hoping Ms. Mack was here, Marilyn Mack was here tonight, but they did a great article on her in the West Orange paper. I thought it was pretty cool that Amy did. So that's really good. And I think there's something coming up. Is she coming in or something to talk or? Thought I saw something about. No, okay, forget it. But, uh, good article on, on her. Very good article. So, yeah, yeah.
I have one question. If we could get some sort of an update on Charter Review Committee? And is it going to, you know, we're on a time schedule for that.
They're actually meeting tomorrow from four to six.
The first time in how long? Or have they meeting or I don't know?
We had to work around people's schedules.
I got it. What, is there any problem that we're going to not be able to get it in time?
No, they're, they're, they're on schedule. Yeah.
November, right?
Yep.
I think it's October. Is it?
It's October.
For the ordinance to come up for you, um, yes, in October. Sorry.
All right. Anything else, anybody?
All right of all hearts, somebody has to satisfy. Let's adjourn. It's nine twelve P M. Nine twelve. Thank you.